I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Okay, adoption of the agenda. I was informed that under presentations on item A, annual library report, that Nicole Pessini is not going to be able to make it tonight, so we'll strike that and we'll make item B, item A. Does anybody else have anything? Would like to close in memory of Donna Allen, who born and raised here in Brisbane and recently passed away after an illness. Close in memory of Donna Allen. Okay, anybody have any other changes? Huh? Do I have any other changes? Okay, do I have an adoption?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we've got an operating menu. First item up, this is evaluation for dog park volunteers, and I think we have one volunteer here. Ted Reederman. Ted, why don't you come forward? You like hanging out at a dog park. Good to see you Ted.
Good to see you.
Ted Reederman, this is your life. You are nominated to volunteer of the year. The volunteer of this year is a contributor that works very hard to help make our community the special place that it is. This year's recipient has been very focused on one public facility that is very special to him. The recipient this year, according to many who use the park, is completely devoted to improving and maintaining this public park for the benefit of all. If it were not for this person, one certain park may not exist at all. Our volunteer of the year has used his skills and contacts to build just about every feature of the dog park. Our volunteer of the year has built all wooden structures, laid the sod, planted all the plants, built the bulletin board, and coordinates maintenance needs with public works to make sure the dog park is in great shape and enjoyable for Brisbane's dogs and their owners. I would like to formally announce that Brisbane's volunteer of the year for 2014 is the dog father, Ted Reederman. We figured this is the only way we can get you to that council meeting. They're saying everybody else is going to show up. All right, we've got you a little sweater here, it says volunteer of the year. Wear that down to the dog park, especially in the summer when it's really cold. And we've got a little plaque here, volunteer of the year 2014, presented to Ted Reederman, Parks and Rec Commission, and you'll get your name on the plaque outside on the big rock in front of City Hall. Thank you Ted.
You've stood a lot of cause.
We'll give you a rebuttal here, if you like.
Just want to thank everyone for this, it's very special. I'm in the, I lost my dog about five months ago, so we're with my wife's blessing, we're looking for a replacement for Big Hatter, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just not me at the park, there's a lot of other people that help out. We have a volunteer day. This year we didn't do it because of the, I had to work up in Lake Tahoe for three months, but next June we'll do five, and hopefully we can find a way to maybe get some sod replaced out there. If you've been there, it's pretty bumpy. It was a good opportunity to put my plug in for getting re-sodded. Thanks again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you Ted, congratulations again.
Okay, we stealthed Ted. All right, this brings us to oral communications, number one. This is, if anybody wishes to speak on any items that are not on the agenda, now is your time. And, any takers for oral communications, number one? All right, that brings us to consent calendar, and we have four things on there. Monthly investment report, ordinance 590, which is prohibition on the use of polystyrene-based disposable food service ware. And we also have approved-
I'd like to remove the next one.
Okay, approved plans and specifications for community pool renovation. So Ray, you want to remove that?
Please.
And then item D, which is approved resolution 2014-45 declaring Marina vessel surplus, okay? Anybody wishing to remove anything else other than item C?
No, I'll move to adopt A, B, and D.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second for A, B, and D for the consent calendar, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, item C, Ray, and I have a question on it too, if you don't hit it, so. Go ahead.
Okay. I thought, first of all, that since the pool is such an important amenity for the community that we shouldn't let it, the renovation and its closure and so forth, we shouldn't let this go on the consent calendar, that we should let the staff explain what we have in mind and what are the likely dates of closure and so forth. So that would be my first request, that you give a little summary of what's entailed here and what we can expect and what pool users can expect. So that's my first request.
So the project will replaster and retile the existing pool shell, and that's a normal maintenance item that ought to be done at this frequency. Maybe the tile within the pool isn't necessarily failed, some of it is faded and stained, but it's really difficult to replaster and keep the tile in place, so it was decided to do the entire shell. And we're also replacing a bit of the concrete on the deck because there is rust at the surface from rebar in the concrete, and I'm not really sure if it was too shallow or it's the conditions, but we've got rust on the surface and we're going to take out the concrete and repair and replace the rust and put it back. And we're also going to sandblast the immediate perimeter of the pool because it's gotten, its finish has gotten a little slick, so we want it to have some texture and not be slippery. And we are, it impacts the area drains around the perimeter as we take out the concrete, so we're going to replace those, and those are scheduled 40 pipe, that's not a significant cost, but it's the most effective way. Put in more area drains because it does hold water, it's pretty flat, and it's hard to get the drainage off the site, so if someone is, if you've been up at the pool, you'll notice that some of the water will sit around the perimeter of the pool and take quite a while to get over to the area drain because there's only a half a percent slope. The construction schedule, the expected construction schedule is seven weeks, so I've said two months because things always come up, so we're hoping we should be able to finish in two months. If we get reasonable bids within the construction estimate, we hope to award at the December 4th meeting, and then execute contracts and get some middles in and be starting in the beginning of January. So we're hoping to do this in January and February and chose that as a lower use time for the pool.
Okay, thank you. So it looks like if everything goes as anticipated, the pool will be closed during January and February?
Correct.
And as from the pool perspective, we've already put the signs up, so we've been letting the patrons know for at least about a month now, and it's been in the star and will be in the star again as we get closer to that. And the other thing we'll do is probably put information about what other local area pools there are that people could use during the closure.
Okay, good. So I had one question that there was something wasn't quite clear to me, and I emailed it to the staff, and I'm sure they have an answer, a good answer. But it looked to me as if a part of the refurbishment was also the separate waiting pool, which has been closed for some time now. And the reason I asked the question as to why that's included is that I recall when I had my maintenance tour of the pool, that the director at that time said that they gave up on keeping the waiting pool open because it's basically separate from the large body of water in the main pool, and that it's from an environmental safety point of view, you have to have proper chemical balances in the water. And I was told that it only takes, you know, one toddler letting loose with his or her urine to mess up the chemical balance for many hours, and so this kept happening and happening, and so it was closed more than it was open, and it was such a hassle to keep it at the correct chemical balance, that eventually decided to just close the whole thing down. And so I'm wondering, was that a correct analysis? Is there going to be some kind of way that it's going to be connected to the bigger pool, or if I got this wrong, or anyway, just kind of a question, I just wanted to make sure that I understand the situation.
So we're, the staff that maintain and operate the pool are new, and we weren't all involved when it was decided to close the waiting pool, but we've, this sort of came about in two directions. Is the new maintenance team leader, buildings and grounds team leader, asked me, why is, why are we not using the waiting pool? I'm sure people would like to use it, and he worked, we have a maintenance company that backs us up and does kind of the more technical or replaces equipment that's kind of beyond the scope, and especially since we don't have very much buildings and ground staff right now, they've been a big asset. And they had a conversation, and he said, I don't know why you don't have this thing operating, you could, you probably need a smaller pump, you need A, B, and C, but why do you have it covered up? And at the same time, we'd started the process of the design for the renovation, and the pool designer said to me in the walkthrough, he said, well, are you going to replaster the waiting pool because you've got an economy of scale here, if you're going to do the big pool, you should do the small one too, even if it wasn't open as long, it's not going to cost you very much. And I said, well, we've had issues with keeping the chemical balance, and he said, no, it should work fine if you have a proportional feed controller and if you're managing those set points. I mean, there are waiting pools and they're smaller than lap pools, and it can be done. I guess the issue was that it's far away from the mechanical room, and so there was, I understood it to be that when you got a call for chemicals, say a child going to the bathroom, then it would send too much chlorine and because it takes, there's a certain distance that the water has to go back before the chlorine turns off, so you just have to well manage those feed rates. So I can't promise, but we're very optimistic from all the professional opinions that we've gotten that we can make it operate.
Okay, yeah, now, I mean, if we can make it function properly, then of course that's better because that does give an option for parents with very small children, so I mean, it's nice, but on the other hand, if we keep running into the same problems that we had in the past, then it raises a question as to, you know, is this an appropriate part of the pool complex? And I really don't know the answer to that, and what I hear you saying is that you have the optimism that we might be able to manage the chemical balance in a way that keeps it open at least most of the time? Is that what I'm hearing?
Right, and it seems reasonable, there are, you know, lots of waiting pools out there, the function, I think it's just a matter of really being on top of and fine-tuning the system and managing it well.
Okay.
My question is.
Well, you asked one-
Thank you.
That was actually the same question that I had as well.
I had the same one.
Yeah, how is replastering and retiling going to fix that chemical? All right, and it's-
But I will take the opportunity to talk a little bit about the historical part of it because I don't think, other than Cherry, I don't think anybody was here, and Cherry and Lisa on staff that, you know, were part of that design. And I was on the design team, and we visited a lot of pools in the Bay Area, and we went to one in San Mateo, and they said, you know, if you're going to design a pool, put in a kiddie pool because all the kids are in there, you know, you never know what goes on, and the pool always gets shut down because somebody goes to the bathroom. And if you put a kiddie pool in there, it really lessens that chance, and then all you're shutting down is the kiddie pool, you know, instead of the whole pool.
Plus it gives, it gives a place for the little ones to go, because when it's really hot, it gets crowded at the pool, and I know my children get scared by the bigger kids in the main pool, so it'd be nice to have a, you know, a safe shallow environment for the younger kids.
So, you know, I was curious about that too, and then hopefully, I mean, that's certainly a sound answer, Karen, and hopefully we're successful at being able to do that, so.
As a final comment, we did put the bid items to replaster and to put the kiddie pool back into operation as separate bid items in the contract, so if their cost was not proportional and didn't make a lot of sense when we bring back the award, we could recommend not doing something with it, but I think we've created an expectation by opening it and getting it started and getting it back operating that-
No, I think, I think it's worth trying, you know, since it's, since it is there. I mean, because I remember we talked about one feature of turning it into just a, an overhead water feature that, you know, sprays water out of the ground and the kids can run through, but if you can have a kiddie pool, I think, you know, we designed it for that specificity and hopefully, you know, we can get it to work properly, so. Anybody else have any questions on this?
I have one question, if I may. Just as a matter of point, I'm assuming there's not a lot of people that are well-qualified for this kind of construction work, it's a very, I would assume, a very specialized market, and I'm wondering where we post this request for proposal and other RFPs that the city's producing, whether it's on our website and how it gets distributed to a broad spectrum of construction personnel.
Sure, that's a good question. We do list it on our website, but it also gets published in a newspaper, we use the San Mateo Times, and it gets put in plan rooms that contractors are connected to and get updates about what plans are out to bid and the timeline and the engineer's estimate. So plan rooms are a way that all contractors keep in the network and know what contracts are coming out to bid, so they don't have to go to the city of Brisbane and look at our website weekly. And this consultant that actually was involved when the pool was designed, gave me a list of eight contractors that they've either worked with or that are, that have a C-53 swimming pool construction license, and we're going to fax that notice inviting bids to them tomorrow morning so that they're aware of it. Some of them are in Southern California, but like three out of the eight are in Northern California, and I would hope that a number of them do bid.
And where on the city's website is the RFPs? Because I've looked for a previous one, and all the projects that were listed were several years old, so I wasn't able to find that on the website, so if you can let me know after the meeting where those are located, if you don't know.
It's a link on the bottom of the page, official business and bids and RFPs, and if it has the older projects, we use Barker Blue Reprographics, and they sell them for us, they scan the plans and they sell them, so they, I have to ask them to take the old projects off the list, but they do say closed, so you might have been in the right place and we didn't have anything currently out to bid. So this won't be up until you guys approve it tonight, it won't be up till tomorrow.
Okay, because that's what I saw was the Barker Blue, but there was no current projects listed, and this was a couple of months ago, so, but thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve plans and specifications?
And authorize publication of a notice inviting bids for the Brisbane Community Pool renovations. I so move.
Have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that brings us to all business, which is item A, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a fourth amendment to the existing South San Francisco Scavengers franchise agreement, extending its terms to November 30th, 2014, and authorizing the mayor to execute a new franchise agreement with South San Francisco for its collection and disposal of recyclable materials, organic materials, and solid waste in the city of Brisbane Zones 1 and 2 effective December 1st, 2014. Hi Maria.
Hello. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. We're bringing back to you our request to review and hopefully approve the franchise agreement with South San Francisco Scavengers for solid waste collection zones 1 and 2. Just to go ahead and up to go over the background again, South San Francisco Scavengers Company has been the historic provider of waste and recycling services for the city of Brisbane and currently, currently has an exclusive franchise for the entire city. We have extended the, the current agreement was effective March 1st, 1999, and was scheduled to expire on March 1st, 2014. Through a series of amendments, we did extend it through to November 7th respectively, due to the extensive redrafting that was required for this 20-year-old agreement, as well as making sure that we address significant changes in recycling programs and opportunities, as well as update areas of the agreement to comply with current legal and waste management requirements. As you know, services under the former franchise agreement not only included weekly residential and commercial solid waste removal services, but also provided for other services such as annual citywide yard waste cleanup, which I would like to note is going to be next weekend, November 15th and 16th this year. They also provided other services as management of our annual diversion reports to CalRecycle, assistance with implementing mandates for the city such as the AB 341 mandatory commercial recycling law, and other recycling services. We're also looking forward to their new service of collecting organic waste with their new anaerobic adjuster scheduled to be coming online sometime around January. In June 2013, the city council adopted ordinance 581 and approved resolution 2013-14, which established multiple solid waste collection zones for the purpose of having the ability to award separate franchise agreements to each zone as the council deemed necessary. Staff was directed to discuss a new franchise agreement for Zone 1 and 2 with South San Francisco Scavengers Company, and Zone 3 with Recology. Staff has met with South San Francisco Scavengers Company over the past year to review and update the franchise agreement to improve the service to the community, as well as address several new mandates. So on September 18th, we brought forward a franchise agreement with South San Francisco Scavengers for the council's consideration, which was attached in the packet. Prior to the meeting, however, some issues with the agreement were identified, so staff withdrew the recommendation to approve so that they can include additional cleanup language and clarification. There was also a request from the city council to review a few questions that came up regarding the proposed fee structure based on some concerns that were raised from members of the audience at that time. So staff has worked with South San Francisco Scavengers to clarify the remaining issues within the franchise agreement. The city attorney has reviewed revised agreement and has approved changes. Staff has also had conversations with representatives from Altamar, the Ridge Homers Association Board members regarding their concerns. As noted in your, in your packet that we, that I handed out earlier on the dais, there was a letter that Mayor Conway that you signed that we forwarded over to Altamar regarding their issue. Just to give you a summary of, a quick summary of this agreement, the term of the agreement is for 20 years for Zone 1, with an option for the city to extend for an additional 10 years. The term is five years for Zone 2, with the option for the city to extend for an additional five years. Because of all the issues that we had going back and forth with updating and cleaning up the language, there's two requirement, there are two issues that we would like you to consider. First is because the current agreement would expire tomorrow, we're asking you to authorize the city managers to sign another amendment to the franchise agreement extending the term to November 30th, 2014, and then also authorizing the mayor to approve the new franchise agreement with South San Francisco Scavengers for solid waste collection zones 1 and 2 effective December 31st, 2014. I've also included on the dais for you, there was an update, we, one of the other things that we noted after we sent you your packet was that the effective date for the rates was incorrect, so it now has a December 1st effective date. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, council questions? Before, before you jump into questions, I just want to let you know that Ray and I spent a lot of time on this actually, and, you know, the city attorney's office did also, because we did a complete rewrite of what was there the last couple of times, you know, so, you know, we had to make it much more applicable to what we do now, and so a complete rewrite was warranted, and it was very time-consuming to do that and then to run it by South San Francisco Scavengers, so it was a lot of work that went into this, so.
Thanks.
Cliff, you were ready to-
Well, I was going to add a question for, for the subcommittee, so I wasn't clear on what was resolved with the folks on the ridge for the Homer's Association for Altamar.
Nothing. Nothing was resolved, unfortunately, you know, it's kind of-
Clark, maybe you can explain the issue.
The issue is that they have, currently they have 96-gallon containers, you know, that are put into their waste enclosures, and also down in the garage, and it's very laborious for the Scavengers Company to go and empty these. So they charge a fee, I think, what is it, a thousand dollars a month?
Currently, there is a thousand dollar pull-out fee.
Yeah, and, you know, Ray and I actually went up and observed it one day, and, you know, it is, it is warranted because you've got to have two guys working the truck in order to do this, and so they're pulling these cans out and then loading them into the truck, and, you know-
Manually.
Yeah, it's very time-consuming, and, you know-
Those are both recycling and trash.
Yeah, right. And, and so that's, that's the way it is currently, and, and I think that the folks up at, was it Landmark, at Altamar?
At Altamar.
Yeah, at Altamar, were complaining why they have to pay this fee, but, you know, it's because of this, because, you know, of all the labor that, and time that it takes to do it. So we were trying to come up with an alternative, and the alternative was, we did some measurements, and the alternative is that, I think it was a three-yard, a two-yard-
Two-yard.
Two-yard container can take the place of the 96-gallon containers, two of them. Was it two 96-gallon containers is one, one yard? And so you could put a two-yard container that would fit in there in most of the enclosures, and it would actually be cheaper for them, and they would have more volume, you know, but they couldn't make a decision because I think there is one, one or two that needed to be modified to fit the-
There's actually an issue, when we review, when I review it with Scavengers, there's an issue about the way the doors are set up on the garbage enclosures, that they cannot slide in and out easily, so that would have to be modified.
Yeah.
Right.
And that modification costs money, and-
Sure.
So the board couldn't make a decision on that, and they haven't made a decision on that thus far, so it's going to stay the same until they decide, you know.
Okay, so if they make a change, then we can modify the agreement?
Right.
Or doesn't it, it would need to be modified, or no, you, no?
No.
Can I just pipe in there real quickly, because we, we have been having active discussions with the Altamar Board, and as of November 2nd, we received correspondence from the board president, Kevin McHenry, so, and there's really two issues that they're, they're looking into. One is the structural capacity of the, of the decks to be able to handle the full-size trucks, and, and the city staff has provided them some information that we accumulated on that, but they want to do, do that independently with their own structural engineer. And then they, they're also concerned about a potential ADA issue with regards to access for some of the ground floor units in the, in the basement with regards to the current way it's set up. So where we kind of left it with them was that they're going to do that assessment and then make a determination on whether or not they feel they can move forward with the improvements, and if they cannot, and they can, and they indicate back to us that they're not able to do that, and we're satisfied that there are justification- they're not able to do that, and we're satisfied that the their justification for that is is legitimate, then I think the commitment on the city's part is to reevaluate the rate structure sometime next year, and our normal schedule for that would be in the March to to June period of time. So that's kind of where it is right now. If they're able to make the changes, then the current rate structure, you know, the rate sheet will work, they'll just have the two-yard bins.
Got it, and that will save them money, too, it looked like on that chart.
Yeah, I mean, it was that will definitely save them money.
According to our calculations in the letter, it saved them $3,200 a month.
Right.
So it's a substantial amount.
The the issue with the pullout fee, and I, you know, I could certainly let Scavengers speak to this if they they want to, but as I understand it, they that that fee has been been a subject of a court order in a lawsuit between the two parties, so that fee is in place. Of course, it becomes moot if they go to the bin bins, they won't, you know, just become moot, so that's a cost that they can get out from under also.
There's the only questions I have, Mr. Mayor. That's it.
Okay. Terry?
So in addition to the pullout fees, the the rate is different for for the 64, for the for the 96-gallon toters, whether you're a multifamily or a residential. And one would assume, and I'm could be wrong, that, you know, the trucks need to pick up a 96-gallon, whether it's here or whether it's at a residential with more than five units. And so I don't see why it would be so much more when they're picking up multiple toters instead of a single toter from in front of your home.
Part of it is tied to the labor cost that's involved. There is a difference in terms of when the residential, single-family homes, and mostly through central Brisbane, over at Landmark and over at Viewpoint, the truck that is used can do that curbside, so there is no need for a person to to exit their vehicle, get the tote over, to dump it into the truck. It's it's done automatically, as opposed to when it's a multi-unit facility, generally they're in a place that is not curbside, and usually that goes to having, again, with the labor going in, getting those, pulling those out.
But isn't that the pullout fee? Shouldn't that be covered by the pullout fee and not by the rate for the weight of or the size of the toter?
Again, it's.
Well, I think it was it was both. Both fees are reflective of the additional cost. And again, the the pullout fee is something that was determined through their lawsuit, so it's not anything the city really has any role in, but the differential in terms of the multifamily is to reflect the additional cost to be able to do that. I think, you know, from the subcommittee, and I'll let Clark and Ray speak to this themselves, but if if indeed we need to revisit this, I think we need to kind of reevaluate the 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 rate structure, but the the reality right now is that to change anything is about a $25, $30,000 revenue issue to Scavengers, and that's something that we would have to go back and look at the entire rate sheet and determine how that money would get made And I think, you know, from the subcommittee's perspective, we've been trying to push, we've been trying to work towards a solution that is kind of an efficiency-driven solution that can save everybody money and be and work for for both parties, and I think that, you know, we feel anyway on the city level that that it will work, and we hope that the Altamar Board will give it the best chance to to do so, but also leaving open that if for some reason they're able to show us and prove to us that it can't work, then, you know, we'll go back and reevaluate that. And and there's probably different ways that we could approach this, but I, you know, and I don't know that we're speculating on that tonight, but there's probably different ways we could approach the rates, the whole rate sheet, but it really will take a kind of a fresh look at the whole rate sheet.
With that theory, if Altamar were able to complete the renovations at whatever cost was to them to make it where they were able to have two-yard toters, wouldn't that make the entire agreement worth less money to the franchisee, and so they would need to bring up their rates to cover that anyway?
In in theory, again, it whatever, they'll they'll make that up by having less cost.
It'd be a one-man operation instead of two, and take less time.
Conversation we had this afternoon with them is that the vehicle that they purchased to provide service to Altamar, which I believe they use for other things, too, but that was primarily purchased for Altamar Service, is near the end of its useful life, so that they're gonna have to make a decision relatively soon on whether they replace that or whether they just go with their normal fleet. So that's a cost that, you know, in terms of having that vehicle part of their fleet and maintaining it and replacing it and that, everything that goes along with that. So the timing really is good to make a decision one way or the other on whether or not this other way of providing the service is gonna work.
That's all I have until we hear from the rest of the council.
Okay, Lori?
Thanks. Well, I wanted to note first that there are people from the Altamar Board here in the audience, so are they going to have a chance to speak later, or should we give them a chance at this point to?
We, yeah, we can, I mean, it's not a public hearing, but.
Okay, while we're on this issue, I think it would be a good idea.
Apparently give them a chance to.
Give them a chance to respond.
Hear their views, yeah.
Letter, if they've had a chance to review it. Or if if.
Are you speaking right?
Yes, would you like to speak now or later? Okay, okay.
Well, if you have.
And I have questions, but not not with.
Why don't you go ahead first and.
Okay, they don't refer to the Altamar issue, though, they're more other issues, so.
Okay, go ahead, and we'll come back to it.
All right, we'll come back. So I had a chance to, I reviewed the the new agreement, and I did, I wanted to let you know, I reached out to Ann Schneider at the Sierra Club, just to see if she could review it and see if, you know, from an environmental perspective, what her comments may be, and she was very pleased, she thought that there was a lot of good things in the agreement. And so I just had a few questions. One thing is I noticed that the agreement does not include construction debris and demolition debris, that that's excluded from what the Scavengers have the the right to collect, so I had asked staff, well, then if construction materials are hauled away by contractors, what happens with those? Are they included in the diversion rate so that, you know, we can still get credit, you know, for any diversion? And my understanding, based on the response from staff, was that we have a construction and demolition ordinance, which does, which actually does include it, when the contractor goes to some site for drop-off, they record the the zip code of where the material came from, so it does get actually measured and attributed to the city. So I thought that was good, good information, to know that we're still able to use that, even though it's not being collected by the Scavengers. Let's see.
It's actually been in place for a long time.
Okay, yeah.
That was one original AB 8939, I think.
Right, exactly. And I don't know if this is the place to really mention this, but, you know, in in some cities, they have, you know, throughout towns, they have the the garbage cans with the recycling, like, in a little container on top of the garbage, that it's separated and that people can more easily see where to recycle, and it's, you know, maybe it makes it easier for collection as well, I don't know, but I wanted to just make make a request to see if that's something we can evaluate, you know, putting in our our downtown corridor, you know, on visitation and in the village, and, you know, I'd be interested to hear feedback from from South San Francisco Scavengers as to whether that makes it more likely that people will use recycling.
We we actually do the collection on those on Park and.
Oh, we do, okay.
Visitation Avenue.
Okay.
Yeah, it's our staff, right? Public work, Randy?
Yes, sir. The public trash cans, we pick those up.
Okay, and do you do you have any idea of as to whether it's more effective, you know, in like, maybe in San Francisco and some larger cities like that, that, you know, they separate it out with the recycling on top, you know, where you can put bottles and cans and then the trash on the bottom? I don't know if that makes any difference or prevents people from going through the garbage, but just wanted to put that idea.
I don't have a sense of that, ma'am.
And then one of the other materials I noted that was not included was dimensional lumber, that's on page 15, section 5.13D.
What page, John?
That's page 15. Dimensional lumber, I believe that means some sort of building material lumber that's been used. It's not accepted for collection. So the Sierra Club had mentioned to me that there's actually this this nonprofit called Building Resources in San Francisco that accepts mater building materials for reuse, they they accept them as donations, and then they, I think they resell it, it's sort of like a, it's, it's a used building material store of some sort, and I thought, that sounds like a really interesting idea, you know, it'd be good if to for to let people know, maybe on either the Scavengers' website or also on our city website, you know, what people can do with dimensional lumber, lumber, if they can't put it in the trash, you know, well, here's another way where it can be reused. It would be good to maybe have a list of vendors, local vendors, where where that could be dropped off, and, you know, just thinking for the future, it would be nice to see if we could attract some sort of operation like that here in in Brisbane, because as we discussed the other day at the Economic Development Workshop, there's this interest in having a maker space, and I thought this idea of, you know, having a site where people can drop off used materials that can't necessarily be put in the trash, that it might be, might kind of go hand in hand with that idea of reuse and conversion. So that was one request. And then on Exhibit B1, there's the reference to toter, and, you know, we talked about that at the last meeting, what is a toter, and that's the the name of the the type of cart, but I wanted to suggest that instead of calling it a toter, I don't know if that's the brand name that we use, that we refer to it as a cart or a wheeled cart, just to clarify the terminology, sort of like saying tissue instead of Kleenex, that would be on Exhibit B1.
Which which page?
B1, let's see.
It's on the rate sheet, the first page of the rate sheet.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's on the first page of the maximum service rate sheet, Exhibit B, under residential property services.
Right, Exhibit B, maximum service rates under residential property service, there's just, there's 20, 32, 64, 96, all the different categories of sizes of toters, and I don't know if that's a term that has to be in there, but just to change the just change it to be more descriptive. Similarly, on Exhibit C, there's a reference to cans, residential cans and institutional cans, and I I wanted to suggest that that be changed to cart, because cans is, seems to me that it would be describing, you know, the old garbage cans, the round cans, whereas now there are carts that are picked up automatically. This isn't something that I came up with, I have to.
Containers.
Containers, carts, whatever. Yeah, the Sierra Club had suggested this, I wasn't.
Change.
And then also, the Sierra Club had pointed out to me that there's these new laws going into effect in 2015 regarding our organics that are going to require composting or anaerobic digestion for commercial and multifamily organics, so I had asked staff if the Scavengers could give us, you know, a synopsis of what those new laws are that will be coming on board in in a year or so. And I wanted to thank the Scavengers for adding in the additional service for the collection of plastic bags. I had asked at the last meeting that that be included, and I think that's a really nice addition, so that if we have plastic films from grocery stores or newspapers that we don't have to take them outside of town, like Safeway often has collection bins outside their stores, and even though there's the plastic bag ordinance in place, you know, and there aren't as many as there used to be, there's still, from the grocery stores and the newspapers, there's still quite a bit, so it's nice to be able to have a convenient location for that, so I appreciate that. I did want to make a suggested change, a slight suggestion to that section, section 5.16, that we add after plastic bags put for recycling, just to clarify that those plastic bags will be recycled, and I had a question about whether that means those bags that are recycled would be included in the diversion rate, and that is not specified in the contract, whereas with all the other types of recycling, it actually says that it is. And those are my comments and questions.
Thank you for pushing for the the plastic bag drop-off location.
It'll save me a trip to Safeway, and I'm sure a lot of, and it'll encourage more people to recycle those. A lot of people just throw them in the trash, or in the recycling, which is even worse, because then it gets stuck in the equipment.
Would you like Scavengers to respond regarding the organic issues that are coming up in 2015?
Sure, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Paul Formosa, I'm with South San Francisco Scavenger Company. I wonder if, in addition to that, if I could just clarify a couple of points from Council member Lou regarding a couple of the comments. The dimensional lumber reference has to do with what materials are acceptable in the the cleanup, the the twice-year cleanup. It's not that we can't dispose of it at all, it's just that it's not included in the cleanup. So there, we can collect those kind of materials.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to clarify was the construction and demolition debris. The contract does cover that, I'm not sure, there is a situation where if a if a contractor disposes of such debris in the normal course of their of the job that they're doing, then they're allowed to do that under the terms of the contract, but say roll-off service, debris box service, that is something that that CND debris is handled through the contract as well. So there is that, there is.
Okay, I meant you're allowed to put it in the trash, but it's not like an exclusive franchise over that material.
It depends on how it's handled. It depends on who handles it, really. There is a carve-out in there for a contractor that's a CND, like a demolition company, if somebody, for example, wants to knock down a building, and they hire a demolition contractor that hauls away very large amounts, that's that's, there's an exception there for that. In the case of, say, a kitchen remodel or something like that, where debris box service is involved, then the contract does cover that as an exclusive part of the franchise. So there there's, there are some, it's covered in different spots in the contract, but I just wanted to clarify that there are some requirements there for construction, demolition debris scattered around here and there. But anyway, so the the organics laws that are coming into effect in 2015 as a result of AB, I got these notes from Ron over here, he's our resident expert, AB 1826, the the law is going to be in effect. in two thousand and fifteen, it will take effect. The, what it requires is that, it basically requires essentially a commercial sources, actually, of organic waste that they, if, depending on how much they are producing, then they need to address that in their services. And so, for example, and by January two thousand and sixteen, requires a organic waste recycling program, a policy or an ordinance, we, we basically have that. By April of two thousand and sixteen, for example, requires businesses that generate eight cubics, eight cubic yards or more per week of organics to arrange for organics recycling service. And we will have that available. And then it steps up from there. So the following year, it, it goes to a business that generates four cubic yards or more per week. Is required to arrange for organics recycling services. And by two thousand and nineteen, a business that generates four cubic yards or more per week of commercial solid waste also is required to arrange for organics recycling services. And so it's, it's a kind of a progressive thing. It's a mandate that, that, that steps up over time. And we will be ready to help our customers implement that when times come.
So would that be included in the food composting service? That would go to the anaerobic digester?
Same thing, yes. Exactly.
Okay.
Sure.
Since he's standing up there, any other questions for him?
You know, I have a quick question, Paul. So, you know, I took a tour of the Shoreway Environmental Center. And it is fascinating facility, you know, how they, they separate all the recyclable materials, you know, going through the different sorting machines and and then hiring folks who, you know, who were, they'll, you know, maybe get out of, out of jail and they, they need employment and getting skills. How, how do you guys sort out your recycling materials? Do you take it to that facility? You, you do it over in South City?
We have a, a similar setup in South San Francisco at Blue Line Transfer. And we even have a little room where we can bring schoolchildren in to observe the, the process safely and out of the way of moving equipment and out of the dust as well. But, and in fact, we have quite a few school tours from Brisbane go there every year. But yes, we use sorting lines, mechanical separation as well. And we bale the materials and so forth. We basically do the same thing they're doing on a smaller scale. They've got a much larger service area to deal with. But we, we do that ourselves.
Yeah.
And we have been for since we started in nineteen ninety, really.
And, and that bottles, you know, I always thought that, you know, the bottles had to be, you know, they couldn't be broken to go into the recycling, but they get, they, you guys break them, right?
Others, yeah, the bottles, the bottles don't really survive the process all that well. We, when you pick them up, they, when they get dumped into the truck, that's one opportunity to break, and then they get emptied onto the floor, and then that's another opportunity to break. And then they go up the sorting belt, there's another opportunity to break. We separate out by hand as much of the whole bottles as we can.
Oh, okay.
But at the end of the story, most of the glass is broken, but it still can be recycled.
Yes.
The company that we bring it to has optical sorting equipment that pretty much whips through it and, and gets every, it really, it's amazing, actually.
Yeah, it is amazing.
But you have to have a lot, a lot of broken glass to justify that kind of equipment, which is what, what they do for the whole Bay Area, so. It does get sorted, it does get recycled, even though it's broken. And we bring tons of it every month, so. Yeah. It's.
Thanks.
Sure.
That it?
That's it, yeah.
Terry, you have any questions?
Follow-up, just because I'm interested on the broken glass versus intact containers. You sort them and they go to a different source if they're intact?
Uh, no, they go to the same source, actually, but they're worth more. So there's a, there's a better. We probably only manage to hand-separate, I'd say probably about twenty percent of it that's not broken. But you do get a higher price for material that's been sorted into the different colors. You have to sort it into green, brown, clear, and then the mix. Eighty percent of it is the mix, the broken glass. And they have different market values depending on whether or not they're pre-sorted. And so we sort what we can.
Okay. That makes sense why it would need to be whole to be sorted.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other question? Ray?
Well, I have one issue that I wanted to follow up on.
Okay.
As Clark mentioned, we have very thoroughly been through the text, as you know.
Yes.
And so just an observation, one of the things that's quite extraordinary is how rapidly the technology has changed. Cause this over twenty-year agreement that was referring to walkie-talkies.
Oh, did it?
So.
Oh, still using it.
Really get a sense of, you know, how the technology has changed over this time. So there were a lot of things that were really out of date that we had to really bring up to current standards. And so that meant a lot of language changes. And so there was a lot of work on getting all those updates into the franchise agreement. But there's one new component, which, you know, the Sierra Club likes and all of us like, and, you know, that's the organic waste collection. And I've visited, as many other people did too, you know, your anaerobic digester, which, which looks like a, you know, terrific facility. And we're very happy that that's close to being up and running.
We're getting there, finally.
But there's one concern that I have in terms of the collection process. And it might even require a slight language modification just to give us flexibility. And that is the current proposal for collecting. It is that the organic waste, food waste, is essentially just be put in with the yard waste for the part of Brisbane that has all the yard waste, I don't know, containers, whatever we call it. And then for the ridge, the idea is that people would have to get additional containers in order to get this collected. And so there are two different problems there. One is you got an extra charge in order to make it happen for residences. And in town, you have the problem that when you put food waste into these containers that are pretty easily opened, as we've said before, you know, the raccoons will have a field day. And, you know, we talked about this and this is a problem you're aware of. But we definitely don't have a solution to it yet. And so what I wanted to include in, in language, and I asked the city attorney to, to draft something, and I hope he's done so, which would just give us the flexibility to look at different ways of doing this. Cause right now, the contract says that it'll just be put into the yard waste without being contained in any way. Which to me just, you know, invites the raccoons. And so we're gonna have, you know, containers all over the place and all over the street and mess all over the place. And you're not gonna be able to collect very easily and not gonna get a lot of the stuff and so forth. So I, we need to give some more thought about how we contain and protect the organic waste from, in effect, natural scavengers. And I had one suggestion that we need to look at, and, and that is, you know, maybe there's some kind of, you know, compostable container that people could put it in. That would be closable, but that would be somewhat, you know, protected from the, the ravages of raccoons. And whether there is such a thing existing, I don't know, but I think we ought to at least investigate it. Cause if we had such a container, you know, then the people could put their food waste into that, and then they could put it in the yard waste. And since it is a compostable container, it could all go in the same thing. But it would contain the food, so it wouldn't be as attractive or wouldn't be as accessible for the raccoons that we know are gonna just raise havoc over this. And then on the ri- ridge, it struck me that, you know, we have a sort of a disincentive for it happening. Namely that they have to, you know, get an extra bin and they gotta pay for that. And so a lot of people are not gonna do it if they have to pay extra. But if there were a way to have this kind of container that was really secure and separate and it could go even maybe in the waste bin and be separated out. And then they wouldn't have to pay any separate for it. Now, the problem is that these, you know, containers, whatever they are, are gonna cost them money, and so that needs to be calculated into all this. I mean, I understand we're, we're not reaching a solution right now, but I think we need to work on this because the way it's set up now, I don't see it working too well. And, and I think we should try some experiments first, you know, try it the way you got it now and, and see if I'm, my concerns are correct. Maybe they're not, you know? Maybe the raccoons hold up their noses at them with that stuff, you know, I mean, who knows? But I think we ought to try some, you know, experimental things rather than go phew, try the whole thing and then have a mess, you know, try it on a block or two or whatever. And in different kinds of things, different kinds of containers, you know, cause we wanna get this right and we wanna make it to work, and you have a big interest in, in it working. So I guess all I'm suggesting is that we include language that allows us to do various experimental things to get this right. Do you make any sense?
Let me, oh, sure. I, you know, I just make a couple of points. First of all, the, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and, and certainly we don't want raccoons or, or in some areas, crows in that sort of environment getting into the, the cans, just in general, not just the yard waste cans. Or what are currently yard waste cans, seem to be organic materials carts. And we have had, this has been expressed to us by your staff at great length, and we've had lots of discussions about it. And we are certainly open to whatever type of containers we can get our hands on that will eventually solve the problem. There are a lot of issues. There's a lot of technical issues involved in that. And currently, there isn't on the market, a wheeled cart with a lid that, that both secures itself and then unsecures itself as you empty it. That functions. We saw a prototype, and we had it in our office one day, and in the process of just demonstrating it, the lid quickly broke. So that one is not quite ready for prime time. But anyway, the, the part of the program is to collect the yard waste weekly instead of bi-weekly. This should help keep food waste, organics from getting too ripe and hopefully not attract critters, critters any more than they probably already are by what's in the normal garbage cans. There's a possibility that putting the food waste in with the yard waste will dilute it even more than it probably is now with, in a normal garbage can. Because you'll have other materials in there as well. I don't know about compostable bag. That's not something we've talked about. Part of the problem there is that when the material goes into the digesters, it needs to be loose enough to, to let the bacterial, the perchilitre, they call it, the, the spray, work its way through the pile. And so one of the reasons for putting it with the yard waste is that the yard waste gives it some air voids in there as it, as it's stacked up. It allows the, the liquid to move through the pile and start the composting process right away. Any bags that might be in there would have to be opened by hand first.
I wasn't thinking of bags. I was, I, the only thing I had in mind, and I don't know whether it's practical or not, it's strictly an amateur imagining.
Yeah, well.
But I was thinking of, cause I've seen it in a number of places, you know, those places that replace the Styrofoam doggy bag containers, you know, that are essentially boxes that are actually closed.
Yeah.
They have closing clips. And, and they are usually made out of some kind of reinforced paper or what have you. And they are compostable. I wasn't thinking of the bags, but they would also have to be, you know, broken up in some way. I understand that.
Sure.
I don't know, it was just, it was just an idea.
Something to think about, yeah.
It may not have any track.
Something to think about.
At all, but just, just trying to think through, how do we ensure that as much as possible of this actually ends up in the, in the digester?
Right. Actually, I've figured this out.
Have you?
Yeah. I've had a lot of experience with this through the years, cause right now, we put everything in the trashcans, right? And I've tried everything from bricks to big rocks to two-by-fours locked under, and they figured out everything. But what they haven't figured out was the bungee cords. It strap up over the top while cans are closed together. But then in the morning, when you put your can side by side, you gotta put the one can two to two and a half feet away from the other one. Cause the raccoon can't open it standing on top of the can. They use the other cans to open the lid. And if you spread them out, they can't open it. And the compost cans that we have, the big green containers, are large enough where they can't knock it over. You know, the, the gray ones.
We'd like to have them two and a half feet apart, actually.
So, I mean, really, it's, it's a methodology. I think what we have would work. It's just using a bungee cord to keep it closed. When it's closed in with the other cans, that basically locks it. But when you take it off, you spread the other can two and a half, three feet, whatever, whatever it takes. Cause they can't open it sitting on top of it and they're not tall enough to reach up and open it, so. And that's, that's a long, a long throw versus a garbage can is a shorter throw. So they're different, so. Anyway, ask my feedback on that, Ray.
Yeah.
I'm getting overcomplicated on it, so.
Yeah, we don't use those big, huge yard waste bins, cause we don't have any room for it. And if you were to gonna add, we use the smaller one. Which is the same size as some of the waste bins.
Right.
If you were to do more up on the ridge and use a separate container, then it would probably be the smaller ones, not the, not the big ones, cause they don't have that kind of yard waste. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's complicated. And what works someplace doesn't work someplace else.
Right.
So I guess the, the main thing I'm concerned about is making sure that the agreement gives us the flexibility to try whatever.
Yes, and I, and I, I think that it does. Not to say that we don't need to add a few things, we can certainly do that. As a, there's, there's always a boilerplate paragraph somewhere in any of these contracts that says that if the city wants to change something, then the company will sit down with them and work that out. We're certainly, I think historically, we've always been willing to do whatever we can to accommodate the situation. And so that, that will certainly continue. And if there's some language change that we need to make, that's, sure.
So I'm gonna ask the city attorney if he's looked at this, cause I know I raised it earlier.
We're happy to review whatever you've come up with.
I have had some discussion with the city manager about this, and there is a, a section, as, as the speaker has indicated, section seven point five, which is sort of the, the opener, as it were. So if there are issues that the city wants to discuss with, with, with the company, that sort of opens the door. I'm pretty sure that we can add some language to that section that deals more specifically with the issue that you're raising. It seems like there would be at least a, a conceptual agreement that we could add some language there. Also, in, in section five point one, there is the, the need to develop a, a trash container management policy. And while, and, and certainly that policy perhaps could also address this particular issue. So I think there are, there's probably sufficient avenues as written, but I think we can add a sentence or two in that section seven point five to be more specific about the issue that's being raised, if that's acceptable to, to the company.
Of course.
Any more questions for Paul while he's standing up there?
No.
Okay. Laurie, was that all your, your stuff?
One other question. So at Viewpoint, the Townhomes, so just, I'm not sure, I just want to clarify what they do in terms of yard waste. I don't, my understanding is they don't have any individual maintained area. It's all HOA, a common area. So would the, the new green bins for them be just for food composting? And would they need that large of a size for that?
Uh, we would need to, well, basically, since the program is essentially voluntary for everybody, it's, there's not a mandate here. We hope there'll be participation.
Okay.
But like in any other service that we have, there's always a matter of, you know, taking things by case-by-case basis. So if somebody wants to participate, they don't have the right equipment to do that, well, then we'll work with them to get them what they need. So.
I'm just wondering if there's any smaller sized bins for food composting otherwise, other than the large green bins?
Yeah, well, those green bins come in three different sizes, so.
Okay.
Just like the garbage, the, the trash ones do. Just like the garbage, the trash ones do. Most people have the large one because they have a lot of yard waste.
Okay.
But there are 32-gallon ones, and there are 64-gallon ones. We don't have a whole lot of people that use them because they don't hold a lot of yard waste. But in this case, for food waste, then sure, we would work with them to get them the size that they want, whatever, what fits in their property or what they can work into their lifestyle, then we're happy to do that.
Thank you, that's all.
Jerry?
On that same vein, the trucks that pick up green waste are, they're a separate truck.
Yes.
And those don't currently go up to the Ridge area, correct?
No, I don't think so.
So?
The yard waste?
The yard waste.
Yeah.
I'm at the Ridge and we have yard waste. We have the large container.
You have the yard waste container?
Mm-hmm.
Talking Altamar, right?
We would, we would have to go there.
Are you talking about just Altamar?
So, Altamar, and I thought you said the duplexes, the townhomes don't?
I don't, that's why I was wondering, I don't know what the, what Viewpoint does, but Altamar does because we have our own backyards. So, we do have yard waste containers.
Yeah, we would, if we have to go to somewhere where we haven't gone before, we'll simply reroute and we'll make those collections.
Sounds like Star Trek.
Yeah, sorry. Didn't mean to make it sound.
But in, but in Brisbane, that's included in your, in central Brisbane, that's included with your rate. And at the individual homes, it's included in your rate.
Yes.
But it will not be included in the rate at Altamar.
Altamar's a different situation. You've got high-density housing, essentially. It's, it's more like a commercial situation. So, they would be in the position of reducing their, their trash collection and increasing their organics collection. And so, say, for example, you have 10 trash carts in one spot. Maybe you would have nine and have one organic, you still have 10. There wouldn't be any additional cost to them in that case.
Okay.
Great. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
So, some folks wanted to speak on Altamar. Come on, just give us your name for the record, please.
I'm Charlene Larson, I'm on the board of the HOA there at Altamar at the Ridge. First of all, we at the Ridge, we're not commercial. We're residential units. So, being classified as commercial, I think, is very unfair. We don't produce commercial waste. We produce what you produce at your own residential unit. With regards to structurally, within our, within our, the toters that, you know, you wanna get us to get rid of and get the bigger, I don't know what they're called, the bigger bins. One of the issues we have is the structure of our, we have three garages there. Structurally, we are not certain that the trash, the trash trucks that carry those larger metal bins will affect the integrity of the garages. Up above, I live on Swallow Tail, the, the upper part of the garage, we are already seeing cracks. So, if we have a trash truck that is pounding those large metal bins onto the top of that garage, we're not sure of the integrity. We had an engineering study, we are waiting for the information to come back. But it's the integrity of the garages and the cost to the residents there that we are most concerned about. And, of course, the noise with those trucks. Because when you're, I also live, it's not a basement, I do live on the lower floors. We have a number of units that are on lower floors that hear everything within those garages, and the sound just comes right up the units. So, if you have a trash truck up above dumping those big bins down, we're not certain what that noise is gonna be. So, there's, there may be a possibility to reconfigure our trash bins or crash, trash storage bins. Unfortunately, the cost may be greater than the cost that we would save if we, if we switched. I saw the number, it's like $3,200 per month. It may be in excess of that per trash enclosure to, to change everything out. So, we are still doing that, and we're just trying to get our, get our, kind of wrap our heads around everything. The fairness here, I go back to the fairness. We're currently paying $1,000 every month for pickup, which we were informed it was because of the integrity of the garages couldn't handle a larger trash truck. That was the original information we were given. Then we were told they have a special truck and we're paying for that. Then we went to court and we agreed, okay, we'll pay $1,000. And now, we're being told, well, you're gonna pay $1,000 plus you're paying 34.7% more than a residential customer in the main part of Brisbane. For the 96-gallon toter. And then, hearing this, we're gonna have to pay for a green bin too, on top of that. So, as a homeowner, we have 214 units at Altamar. It's a fifth of the residents here in Brisbane. And per this contract, that only two people were in the subcommittee, yet a fifth of the residents that are being affected by this contract, not one of us participated in this subcommittee. No other residential person in this whole city participated in the subcommittee. Only the two of you. So, this is a major rate increase for the people in Altamar that two people made a decision about. It's quite unfair. And we do not, additionally, I've lived in a regular house, I've lived in many regular houses. You get two additional pickups per year for construction debris, sofas, things that you wanna declutter your house of. We get none of that. So, we pay $1,000 a year for a reason that's still, a month, a month, that we still cringe every time we have to pay it. Plus, we pay 34% more than anybody in Brisbane. And when a neighbor dumps a toilet at the trash, we have to pay $195 to have it disposed of. But yet, you as a homeowner here in Brisbane can call Scavenger and say, hey, can you come by, I need my second-year pickup, free. We are residences, we are not commercial. We don't, we don't have commercial waste other than when somebody leaves a refrigerator and a TV in my parking lot or a recliner in our trash bin. We have to pay to get that disposed of. In addition to the disposal costs that we pay now. So, I, I, I'm shocked, I just saw the letter today that we were sent. We gotta let it, like, it was to the board today, that was the first letter. The rest has been emails, Carolyn's been trying to let us know what's going on. We have a lot going on up there. And I, I'm in shock, and I think most of the board is in shock. So, I think it's, it behooves you to look at the rate structure. We can't make a decision overnight regarding structural integrity, integrity to the garages. The biggest concern is, of course, the pounding of that metal bin against the garage, especially in the areas where it's open below. Because, as I mentioned, we already see cracks in some of the garages. So, you know, if we make these changes and we do this and in a couple of months, we have more cracking, who's gonna help us pay for that? So, that's my two cents.
Okay. Do you wanna talk, Carol?
I also wanna say that the weight of the truck is only part of the issue with the trucks going over, you know, changing out to the.
Give me your name for the record.
What?
Your name for the record.
Oh, I'm Carolyn Parker, and I'm up at Altamar. And the, the two-yard containers, we're gonna need a, a truck to come over and, and we'd have to modify the structure, the structures. And I don't know how much that's gonna cost. But also, I wanna say that the garages are a bit fragile. They seem to be, have a mind of their own. They start splitting, and then it rains and, you know, and the cars below get rain on them and the subsiding of the dirt and everything. And, and to add on a 30-ton truck, I think is, is, is going to cause more of the degradation that we're very concerned about. And I think that's been almost more that we're worried about than almost anything else. I, I think it's, easily would cost us $30,000 to switch out the doors, easily. We would have to put it out for bid. There's certain contractors who only, we can only take certain contractors, they have to be licensed to work in association. So, so we wouldn't be able to get the same rates that we would if we just went out and got a contractor. So, so I think, you know, we're looking at a huge cost increase initially, but we're also looking at maybe some, a lot of repairs that, you know, we keep, it's like we put our finger in the dark to kind of keep the, the garages going. So, so that's been one of our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
And the green waste, you know, we would like to participate with the green waste, but I cannot imagine that we are gonna pay when the city is not paying for the green waste. I think that, that would make me feel bad. I would, I think that, you know, we would want to help and do our part. But, you know, if, if the city is not paying for something and we're paying for it, then, you know, we're probably not gonna do it. And, you know, I'd like to be environmentally careful. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert, you wanted to talk on this?
Well, Robert Howard, I live up at Altamar on the ridge. Charlene said what I was gonna say about costs. My other main concern is the heavier truck. Research that was done in the 60s by a number of transportation institutions demonstrated that axle weights, increase in axle weights have an exponential effect in damaging road surfaces. So, it's not just a linear effect. In fact, so, you know, increasing the, having a heavier truck going over the top of the various parking structures will, which act as the parking lots and do have the storage areas for the garbage containers, will lead to increased rate of degradation of the surfaces there, which will be additional cost to us. Also, the interior surface, in the bottom of several of the garages, there's areas for garbage containers as well. Don't know if the big truck will actually be able to fit in there. And also, those surfaces weren't designed to have heavy containers dropped on them. They were meant just for parking on, and so that's gonna cause damage there as well. Then, there's gonna be the cost of modifying the areas for containers where they have the pony walls, have those big metal containers in there. They won't fit with the pony walls, probably. And then, doorways, and that's gonna be a lot. And it'll, as Carolyn pointed out, it'll take a long time to get changes made because of all the bidding processes and restrictions that homeowners associations have on, for condominiums have on who they can accept bids from.
Clay? Are you prepared to address some of the concerns? Because some of the things that were brought up, I mean, I know we talked about the $1,000 a month fee and what that's for, but the 34%, is that the commercial fence?
Well, first of all, let's, let's get our, our terminologies correct. If you take a look at Exhibit B under Item 2, it's called a multi-unit residential property service. That is the, the category under which the Altamar is in charge. They are not charged a commercial rate, it's called a multi-unit residential property service. As far as the rates, and I'll defer maybe a little bit to Maria, but the rates, as I understand it, for all of these went up by whatever percentage the increase was. So, the differential between the multi-unit now and the, and what it was before is basically the same, it's just gone up by whatever that percentage was that we've increased the rates by. Excuse me, I'm talking to Maria.
So, one of the things when we started looking at this agreement was that the old franchise agreement had both commercial and multiple-unit residential properties as a category. So, that's where those original rates came from. We requested that they separate them out so that it's a clearer designations, one that would be commercial and one that would be multiple-unit residential property service. So, those rates, again, were in one category prior to this new agreement that clearly identified that it was for both commercial and multiple unit, and we're just separating it out for clarity purposes. So, the increases that occurred across the board were the same percentages that were calculated and to accommodate both the franchise fee and increase in cost for scavengers.
Okay. So, the city had had CSG go out as far as looking at the structural integrity they sent an engineer out there, can you go through the methodology of that? I understand they wanna do their independent study.
Right, so we, we did have our structural, our building official, their personnel go out there, I believe in May or June of this year. I think they looked at the plans. And their determination was that it wasn't a structural engineering report, but based on the calculations, they believe that was sufficient. As we stated earlier, I mean, I certainly understand all the speaker's concerns with regards to the structural integrity. And from the letter that we got back from the board president, they were having their structural engineer take a look at that.
Right.
And it seems to me that if their structural engineer comes back and provides us information, technical information, that indeed, the heavier trucks should not go on the, on the top of the deck, then, yeah, I think that's a total game changer in terms of how we look at this issue.
Right.
But I think we need real data.
Right.
I do wanna note also, in terms of what's available for the two-yarders, it does not have to be a metal container, there are plastic containers available, as well as we can discuss about the timing of when service is provided so that it's perhaps later in the morning, so that it does not disrupt residents that much.
And, and just a point, you know, about all the meetings, you know? I mean, we've been meeting for over a year on this, and address that.
Yeah, I, I, just to respond in terms of the letter that went out today, the, the purpose of the letter that went out was just to put in writing basically conversations that go back months. As, as, I believe, Clark, you were out there in May, I believe, or maybe even earlier than that.
Earlier.
Yeah, and, and there was communication with Altamar, and also, I know South San Francisco scavengers, route people have been out there and had conversations with people out there. So, there's nothing in your, in the letter that you signed today that is new or in any way. So, there's nothing in your, in the letter that you signed today that is new or in any way, um, a surprise. I mean, it, it's just simply an e- effort to kinda memorialize everything that's gone on to date.
And our meetings that have been ongoing have been open to the public. They just haven't been open to our three colleagues, right?
Correct.
So, anybody could, uh, could attend those meetings, so.
I, I, you know, it, just speak on behalf of the Subcommittee. I mean, I think there's been a lot of effort, in good faith effort, to try to come up with solutions for this problem. Um, and I, I would hope that members of the, of, uh, who live at Altamar would, would appreciate that, uh, they, they may not feel that we're there yet, but they certainly should acknowledge that there's been a tremendous amount of effort on part of two council members, um, let alone some staff members, but certainly on two council members who've actually gone up to the site and visited and looked at it with their own two eyes and, and have been very engaged in trying to come up with a solution here.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
Since I wasn't part of that Subcommittee and couldn't attend any of those meetings, I, it sounds like a lot of hard work has gone into it. But I was wondering if, um, you know, if the committee, Subcommittee had considered, um, you know, having the containers not for pickup in the garages, but sh- on the curb side, you know, kind of like they do for parka pickups. Um, I know that might require more work on the part of the residents to go out to the street. Um, but I was wondering if they considered, you know, having maybe a bin that they could put their yard, their, their organics into the residence, you know, and that it could then be wheeled out or, or to the curb, or that, you know, the residents could bring it to the curb, um, you know, once a week, um, when it was ready for pickup to eliminate the whole, you know, issue about the garages.
That would, that would be a solution. I think that the homeowners association would have to come up with. I mean, we can't impose anything, I don't think, like that.
Yeah, I know, uh, you, Paul and Ron may wanna speak to this, but there was a point in time in, in the context of their, um, negotiations with Altamar where I think Altamar had started taking the, the toters or carts out to the, to the sidewalk. Um, and I remember my city engineer coming to me and saying, hey, this could potentially create a safety problem. Um, but we tried to let the two parties kinda work that out. So, I think they, they tried that solution, but it's a very costly solution to, to, 'cause they had, basically, as I understand it, Altamar had to hire somebody to actually bring those all out to the curb. Um, and that was not an inexpensive, um, inexpensive proposition. And I do remember driving by there and it was, you know, it really crowded out the, uh, the street, um, in terms of those car- carts being out there. Um, so, I'm not, I'm not sure that that's a really great solution.
Well, I'm not suggesting that it be one cart per residence, but, you know, sort of like a, a group.
Well, it is, I mean, it's not one. It, it is a group. It is a group, uh, situation, but there was a lot of them. I guess you got a sense of how much, how many different carts they're dealing with up there, but, I mean, it was, it was pretty impressive, how many carts were out on the street.
A lot.
A lot.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna say that, um, I don't know. We have made a good faith effort to try to, to come up with a, a solution 'cause we understand that there is a problem there. And, uh, this is the best we've come up with. If there's a better solution, uh, we're open to it, for sure. Um, I really think that the problem was created by the original design. Uh, that whoever designed it didn't think very much about collecting garbage. Uh, and so, that's one of the things that I've observed when, you know, walking around and looking at the enclosures and it almost seemed as if it was an afterthought. So, there is a real problem. Uh, and I think the, the structural integrity question is also a, a very valid issue and, uh, needs to be investigated. Um, and I also agree, as I said earlier, that, that people on the ridge shouldn't pay more for the collection of organic waste. I mean, I've already said that. Um, so, I hope we can, and the scavengers seem open to working on that. Uh, so, um, I think we can address that one. A couple of the others are still sort of difficult to deal with 'cause we don't have all the data yet. Um, but, and the sooner we can resolve it, the better. And, as has been pointed out, we've been working on it for a while and, uh, you know, we're not there yet, but we do wanna find a solution that's fair and reasonable.
That's it. Carolyn? Thank you, Maria.
I, I do wanna thank you. I walked with you when we originally looked at the garbage structures. And, you know, it is a problem up there. And I, I do wanna say that I appreciate all the negotiations we've had. Uh, I think where I went into shock, and, and this is where I started having issues, was when I saw the difference between our rate for the ninety-six, the, the containers we're currently using. I never, ever had any idea what the, uh, rate was for the, um, residents. And when I saw the difference in the, in the rates, I was horrified. You know, I, I really felt bad. I still feel bad. You know, I feel that, um, we're not commercial anymore. It's been separated out. And if we need to keep those ninety-six gallon containers, I would, I'm sorry, like it to stay at the same rate as the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anybody else wish to speak?
I, I have a question, Clark.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, the, um, looking at that rate structure, so, the, there's an additional fee for, for pulling out the carts right now on top of the difference in the cost, like?
Yeah, that, that was something that the parties negotiated.
Okay.
It's not part of our agreement.
And, and, and I know that we've, you know, separated multiple unit residential property services from the commercial, though the, the rates for the gallons, the, the totes are, are identical. So, um, I, I, I'm just kinda curious. I know there's the extra issue, you know, extra, you know, effort to pull out the carts. Okay, you have that additional cost. If someone could explain to me why, why there is the difference between, between the two. What's the additional cost for, for doing so?
Well, I, I think probably scavengers needs to respond to that. I mean, it, it's a cost of manpower and equipment, as we said. Um, and the, bo- both of these, the, the, the pull-out fee as well as this differential rate. And, you know, I mean, I, I think th- this is really hard to measure between the multifamily units and the residential. I mean, I know we're trying to act as though they're all the same, but, you know, if you're living in a multi-unit facility, you're putting your garbage into a common garbage vis- can or gar- karma, uh, garbage cart, right? It's, it's not a one, you know, it's not as though you're paying that rate for your one unit, okay? You're paying as an, as a multifamily. And so, how many multifamily units drive one of these ninety-six gallon?
Okay, and, and, yes, and that, and that's, that's where I wanted to get at.
Well, I don't know what, I, I don't know the answer to that.
So, say, for example, where Lori lives, right? So, say she has a ninety-six gallon wheeled cart, not a toter, right? And so, she, she's gonna pay eighty-five, forty-seven. And then, at, at Altamar, you could have three units that might put, I'm just saying, you know.
Right.
And then, and then the person in that, it, so each person pays a portion of?
No, they, they, it comes out of their due, their HOA dues.
And, and so they would, e- each, uh, unit would pay the hundred and twelve, thirty-seven?
Well, uh, e- the, the, Altamar gets a bill every two months, I believe, from, from scavengers that is for their, their entire service. So, and they pay for it out of their HOA fees. So, they, e- each unit pays so much a month for HOA fees, which goes to a variety of different things, including this. And then it gets paid. So, there's probably inequities within the group, right?
That's right. So, you could have, uh, a, a single person living in a unit paying the same amount as a family of four.
Right.
And, they all pay the same amount because they would be extremely difficult to be able to sort out.
Right.
Okay. All right, so, um, thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Anybody else?
One further question. So, before I had asked if there were different sizes of yard waste containers, and the response I got was that there are, but in Exhibit B, it says there's a ninety-six gallon, and it doesn't say whether there's other sizes. Am I, can, can someone clarify for me whether there's different sizes of the yard waste containers?
I've seen some smaller ones.
Okay. Where is that in Exhibit B? 'Cause I didn't know. I mean, we have a large one and we'd never fill it up. So.
What's your question?
The question was, if my, the answer before was my question about whether there's different size yard waste containers was that there are, but I'm not understanding where in the contract it shows that because it looks to me like under Exhibit B, it just says includes ninety-six gallon bi-weekly, bi-weekly yard waste toter service.
I think we just need to clarify that in terms of it's up to ninety-six gallon bi-weekly yard waste toter service, so we can include the other sizes that are available.
Okay.
Captured somewhere else in the agreement, but I.
But I think it's the case that, that, that people just pay one rate. Uh, and, and they pay a rate for, you know, they, if they have a ninety-six gallon waste bin, that's the rate they pay, and then everything else is included in that.
Okay, you can get a small.
For each of the bins. You just pay one rate for whatever size trash bin you have.
I see, so even if you request a smaller yard waste toter, it doesn't make a difference because there is no fee for that anyway.
Right.
Yeah, it's included, isn't it?
It's, it's included in.
Right, that's inclusive in the residential, the section, section one.
Okay, well, I think then it would just be good for the, maybe the city of scavengers just to let people know that they can order smaller sizes because it is pretty heavy to wheel that out to the curb, especially, you know, it's not, if it's not necessary, you might as well get a smaller size.
Right.
Yeah, and, and that may be the case for smaller units too.
Right.
Like four, five units or something like that.
Yeah.
Right.
And at Landmark, I mean, we have large yards, but a lot of us have professional landscapers, so we just are not the ones out there collecting all the yard waste.
Right. Okay. Robert, you had a question? Thank you, Maria.
Robert Howard, Altamar the Ridge. So, I was curious, I, I still don't understand why there was a, what, a price differential between Altamar and the rest of the city. Because being higher density, we have over, you know, over two hundred units. Takes them relatively short time to go through that, the Altamar route. And I'm wondering how long it actually would take a route in the other part of Brisbane to collect from over two hu- hundred houses. I suspect that's longer. So, you know, you have to pull out Altamar. I don't think it compensates for the amount of ti- extra time it takes probably to collect from two hundred individual houses.
Paul, or, or, you guys wanna address that? I, I mean, what the difference is?
Well, I, I don't, um, have, uh, information off the top of my head about how many hours a week we spend at Altamar compared to, say, two hundred homes. We do have to keep in mind that it's a two-man crew that has to go to Altamar as opposed to a one-man crew handling, handling two hundred homes. Two hundred homes, the, the, the normal amount of, uh, containers that a, uh, a, uh, automated truck can handle would be something like, um, six hundred to eight hundred houses per day, uh, with one man. Um, at Altamar, I believe we spend probably two to three hours, uh, collecting at that site. And, but with two men instead of with one, so, i- it's kinda spread out. There's a lot of containers here and there. Some of them are twice a week, most of them are once a week. And, uh, there's quite a bit of labor involved in it. The pull-out fee isn't just to pull out the containers, it's to pay for the truck and the extra equipment as well that was specially designed for Altamar. Uh, in order to get into the garages, which is where the developer wanted the toters, or wheel carts, sorry. Uh, they wanted them there for the, uh, convenience of the residents. And in order to do that, the openings into those, those ramps are, um, quite a bit smaller than your average garbage truck. Had to be specially designed, had to have a exhaust stack that was only so high, you know, that sort of thing. We had to take into account the, the angle of the ramp, the opening that it could get through and so forth. Um, it's not your standard garbage truck. And so, that was part of the, uh, the original design of it, was to use this truck. And, um, over the years, it's worked out well. Uh, none of the compo- and, and none of the issues raised have to do with service. Uh, we are doing the job, and we are doing the job that we were asked to do when the building was built. Um, as for the difference in the rates, it has to do with a situation where, uh, you've got, uh, as you mentioned, there's, there's a higher density of, uh, materials and containers that are used by, um, more than one living unit. Um, we don't have one, one container per unit. Uh, we've got probably, uh, I believe at last count, there were something like, uh, maybe eighty trash carts, something along that line, and, and sixty-something recycling carts. And as I said, some of them are picked up twice a week and some are pick- most of them are picked up once a week. So, um, you get a higher density in a multifamily situation. Uh, you've got a situation where you have to, uh, go in and collect the carts, bring them out manually. Uh, you can't just drive down the street and grab them with a robotic arm like we can in a regular, in a, in a lower-density residential area. Uh, there's, so there's economies of, of, uh, scale there, and there's a, and there's efficiencies that are addressed through those rates. Um, other companies may handle it other ways. And as, uh, Clark mentioned, as the city manager mentioned, um, if this situation, uh, get more data and we have to look at it again, there's other ways to restructure the rates so that they may, uh, be more, I don't know, acceptable. Uh, but, uh, the, the rate, the difference in those two rates is not new. It's been there all along. Um, we have simply continued on with what we, we had. Uh, there were the rates that were in effect when the buildings were built, and now the rates are in effect today. Um, we've, we've, uh, simply, uh, we've had the same structure all along. Nothing's changed there. Um, and it has to do with a situation where you can't, there's more labor involved in it. Uh, the extra charge, the thousand dollars a month, uh, was, uh, was two thousand dollars a month before the lawsuit. Um, and it was negotiated down for a temporary period of time. Um, and we've, uh, we've, there's many ways that, that, um, money could be saved in that service. It would, it might be, uh, as, as Mr. Mayor, you've seen yourself and Ray, um, there are ways to work around it, but there doesn't seem to be. It just hasn't happened yet. Um, we have tried. We've spent a lot of time ourselves. And, uh, we are willing to, to continue to try. I mean, that's what we do. We're not, uh, all that thrilled that we've got a group of customers that, that aren't happy with us. Um, I think they are happy with the service. It's, the rates are a question. Uh, but I would point out that for ten years, uh, from the beginning of the project until about two thousand and ten, um, everything seemed to be fine. And, and, uh, at that point, uh, the wheels came off the cart, so to speak. But, uh, we are still there trying to, uh, do what we can to make the situation better.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, any other council questions, discussion?
So are the rates then for Altamar, for the trash, are they also higher than for the rest of the residents in Brisbane? He said that the rates have been always higher for, for the trash bin, so what, what's the difference there? Do we know, if we have that figure?
Five, five units and above, they're pretty much the same.
Look in Exhibit B, you'll see.
And for, for Altamar specifically, I'm thinking.
Well, they're the biggest one affected.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, with council's pleasure on this.
Can I, I, I do have, uh, one question, uh, on the rate increases or the, um, over the course of the franchise agreement, the, the method of increasing the rate is different on this contract than on the upcoming contract that we're going to be hearing about later. Can you give a brief synopsis on, on that? Differences?
I will try my best, but I may need to defer to our financial expert for it.
It's complicated.
Basically, for scavengers, there are two ways that the increases occur. One is based on a CPI index that we do, um, every year and we take a percentage of the different, of the, um, change in the CPI to adjust the rates. Um, another is a market, um, study that, or basket, um, study that we do where we take a look at rates at different jurisdictions and again, take a look at what the average increases across those and do a percentage of that as well. For recology, they have a different method, which is based on a, um, I believe it's called a refuse rate index where they take a look at three different, um, areas, my apologies, I need to find. Those are, those are based on weighing three different, um, issues, which are fixed labor, variable processing costs and biodiesel fuel. So based on that, um, there is a formula that they use to, um, based on, on that index to base their increases on. Um, in each situation, usually what will happen is that we will get notice a few months early so that we can review it, um, at the subcommittee level to see if there are issues. And at that point, that would be, should we decide that we need to tweak it or review it or discuss, um, the increase, that would be the time for us to take a look at it. Historically, we've had situations where there were higher increases, um, double-digit increases that were, um, proposed. And we've worked with scavengers in the past to help, um, smooth that over a couple of years in implementing so that it wouldn't be such a high, um, one-time jump up at that point. I believe, I want to say within the past five years, I think what we've done is, um, spread out a market increase over a three-year period, including the CPI. But, um, that's what we do when it, when we get the request for the rate increase to kind of adjust appropriately. Hopefully that answers your question.
It answers most of the question on, on how the two different rates are thought of, but not why we are doing two similar contracts in different ways.
That's, that's the way they do theirs. I mean, the way they, they, the separate companies calculate stuff, it's, it's two different methodologies, Clay, you want to?
Yeah, and I, and I think going down into the future, that's something we may want to look at with recall, with regards to the recology pro, um, franchise agreement. But the reality right now is that they've only got seven customers in their, in their service area. And for them to have kind of a, a different rate structure than what they use in San Francisco doesn't, you know, make a whole lot of sense. And, um, oddly enough, um, most of the customers that they will quote-unquote being gaining by this, this, uh, new service area, they've already been providing the service to. And so they're going to be, um, you know, for, for those companies, they're not going to see any change in, in the service or change in the, in the rate structure, so it's something they're, they're used to. As the Baylands develops in the future, yeah, I think that's probably something we want to take a, take a look at. Uh, but it just didn't seem like it made sense at this point.
Okay, and then for the, um, uh, subcommittee, a question on, on a reason why we had different contract times for the different zone one and two within the contract? Was there a reasoning behind that?
There's always a reason.
Could you explain the reason to me briefly?
Yeah, Ray, you want to do it or you want to have to have to?
Yeah, well, it's my understanding, it's the nature of the situation that the zone one is basically, you know, central Brisbane, the residential area that's going to be fairly stable over this period of time, whereas zone two is related to the Baylands and so that's very likely going to change. Oh, I shouldn't say very likely going to change, there's a probability that it will change, uh, over the next five or ten years and so we wanted to give ourselves more flexibility. That's the reason.
And then, um, do we want to have the council discussion on this before we?
Yeah, I mean, I, that's kind of.
Is that where we're at now?
Yeah, that's where.
Asking if that's where we're at.
That's where we're at, that's why I was saying, council's pleasure. What do you want to do, what do you want to, what's your pleasure here?
Well, you know, I, I personally find it very, um, you know, you went through this and made a lot of changes to, um, bring it up to speed and I appreciate all the work that you went through. I know we've changed the, um, service rates to, you know, break out multiple-unit residential from commercial, but we didn't change any of those rates, they, they're the exact same rate. We're just labeling them differently. And while the people up at Altamar have been historically paying more for their garbage service over the years since the garbage service was started, I think that was an original agreement with the developer. And they didn't have as much vested interest in making sure that they had a competitive, as competitive rate because they weren't going to be paying it. Ultimately, someone else was going to be paying that. And now it's the homeowners association and ultimately the residents, which are Brisbane residents. And I, I really feel for them. I know that, you know, the pull-out fee, the thousand dollars they pay per month is, you know, not necessarily their fault, but it's also not the scavengers' fault that, you know, it's a poorly designed, for whatever reason, that they are stuck with or at least have that issue with. But I think that this contract is our chance to make it right for them or as right as we can. And I would certainly feel more comfortable if the rates were less of a non-comparable with rates that are here in Brisbane. So, that's my feeling on that.
Yeah, you know, um, I, I agree with what, you know, you know, many things you just said, Terry. Yeah, you know, we, you know, you want things to be fair. And I, I think we had a pretty good discussion tonight, you know, trying to understand, you know, the details as much as possible. You know, the subcommittee, I mean, these guys have been working on it for a long time and you guys have done an excellent job. You know, they get into the weeds and that's why you have these subcommittees, so that they can really understand the issue in a much deeper sense. And then be able to bring that knowledge to all of us. You know, the, 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 the rates are what they are and this is something that was negotiated, you know, a, a long time ago when these units were built. Yeah, understanding that, that each individual unit, they don't, they're not paying that rate that's shared amongst all of the, the units. To me then, it, it seems fair to, to have it, you know, be set up the way that it is. Granted, you know, it was, uh, you know, it's, being associated as commercial, you know, makes you, you know, perhaps feel uncomfortable. And, and I'm glad that it's separated, though it still stays the same price. And then it's, you know, does it really make a difference? Is it just a name change? You know, I, you know, you might interpret it that way, I, I, I don't, I, I, I think that it's fair. I hope that, um, you know, something can be worked out between, um, the homeowners association and the scavengers. There's still data that needs to be, um, analyzed. Hopefully the, the trucks, uh, that, uh, that pick up the garbage, the larger ones can, um, you know, that the, the decks can, can accommodate that, that, that weight. Based upon the information that we have right now, the analysis is that it, it can. But I, I'm glad that you're, you're digging a little bit deeper and, and, and making sure on, on your end. Because, um, you know, you, you need to have that sense of comfort. So, um, I, I, I'm fine with, with moving forward with, um, what is being recommended.
Laurie?
Yeah, I agree with, um, much of what, what Cliff said, you know, I, I, I hear the sense of, you know, the call for fairness from, from the Altamar residents and I, I hope that we are able to see some, something worked out. That, that is, you know, fair to the residents because they are receiving the same service as, as all the other residents in town. You know, it made me think of, you know, whether we would analogize their higher fees to, you know, the HCP assessment that we have up at Landmark, which, you know, is a little bit different, you know, I live at Landmark and, you know, I guess by, by living there, we have to pay into that fee for, you know, the privilege of being, being able to live that close to the butterfly habitat. But, right, and you pay that too. But, um, but the garbage service is, is, to me, it's, you know, it's something that, you know, all, all residents are receiving the same service regardless of where they live in Brisbane. So, you know, if it's not feasible to make the, the changes, um, to the, to the garage structure and we may want to consider if the most equitable thing would be to even out the rates for all residents in Brisbane so we pass through, you know, any increased cost. And, you know, sort of like what we do with the water rates, I think that, you know, I understand that in Crocker Park, they get some really low rates because of some historic water contract. And as a result of that, you know, the rest of Brisbane is able to, to reap the benefits because of that low historic rate. Even though, you know, we're not in Crocker Park, we're not businesses, but the residents get the benefit of that. So, um, that's something we might want to consider with the, the garbage rates, with the, you know, the, the organics service as well to see what is most equitable, to make sure that everyone's getting the same service at the same rates. But I am comfortable, you know, moving forward tonight with, with this as it is, you know, with the understanding that, you know, Altamar will work towards some sort of resolution.
Right. Yeah, when we started, uh, this whole process, particularly dealing with the Altamar issue, I, I think we kind of expected by the time we got here that we'd, we'd have it resolved. And so we wouldn't be continuing the, the old rate structure. So, the fact that we are is a matter of the inability to, over the course of six or so months, to, to get this resolved. So, it was our anticipation that we wouldn't have to continue with this particular rate structure. But it, it's, it's, it's a difficult thing to say, okay, so what is and what isn't fair? And that's where we need to really get some thought to it because we're looking at, you know, ninety-six gallon kind of thing. But ninety-six gallon in central Brisbane, that's per residence, per unit. And if you look at Altamar, which is, you know, a different kind of situation, it's multi-units and so forth. You know, they have a lot fewer trash units that they're charged for than they have units. So my, you know, back-of-the-embelliment calculation is that per unit, they're paying about forty-five dollars, you know, which is half of what the people in central Brisbane are paying. So, you know, what, what is, you know, what do we use as, as the? As the metric for determining, uh, you know, what's, what's fair? You know, is it, is it per unit or is it per person or is it per house or is, you know? So anyway, um, we haven't really, you know, looked at that set of issues. And that's something I think we need to, need to address and, and, and not that I have an answer to it, but there are different ways of looking at it. And so we need to, you know, think about that and, uh, maybe make some adjustments accordingly. But I think that, I'm hoping that, um, you know, by going ahead and, and having something that presumably, um, you know, Altamar is not terribly happy with, we can, we can really work at getting a solution to this so they feel that they're being, you know, treated appropriately and, and fairly. And that is our intent ultimately and I hope in the near term, you know, in a month or two or three, we can, we can get this resolved so, you know, that you're comfortable that, that's done fairly. We just need to look at, you know, all the things that are still outstanding to, to get a good handle on, on making the best decision. That's my cut on it.
Terry, are, are you prepared to move forward on this, knowing that, uh, there's a lot of things still in the works on this data?
Well, if it's the council's pleasure to move forward on this, we certainly can. And, um, we don't always have to be in agreement.
No, I'm just, uh, I'm, I'm asking.
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
Because I'm, I'm, wasn't clear on whether you want to try and resolve something because, uh, you know, we, we have been. We've been working on this, you know, we've.
Oh, I, I know that we have been working on this and, and I know that there's a desire for the, for this to move forward.
Well, our contract expired, I think, uh, when, when, we've been extending it.
We've been extending it, yeah.
Expired July first or something?
Um, originally.
June thirtieth?
No, I think it was February twenty-eighth, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, and, and again, and I, I appreciate Ray explaining, you know, or, or saying that there's different ways to look at fairness and, and equity. You know, but it, it is fairly, you know, it's not apples to apples. The, the two services, um, they're very different. Both by the amount of hands-on requirements to, to get their service taken care of, the pull-out fee, the not having the green waste, the not having the extra pickups. You know, there, there are differences in the services. And, um, you know, it, I've talked with Carol and I've talked to other people at Altamar and they've reached out to me because they felt that it was somewhat unfair, if not very unfair, that they're treated differently. But they are different. But, you know, you ask if, if I'm willing to move forward, I'm not sure how we could make this rate more equitable in the short term, you know, immediately or what we'd be willing to do at this point with the contract on the table. And so, you know, I, I'd be happy to discuss that, if, if it's something that can happen. But I'm also willing to not vote for it. If you, if, if you guys want to move forward with it, um, you know, I don't think that we always have to be in agreement.
Yeah, and I think it is an interpretational thing, you know, I mean. Yeah, and I think it is an interpretational thing, you know, I mean, uh, certainly I understand where the folks in Altamar are coming, and we have tried to resolve even, I think, wanted to go to a meeting in October, to a board meeting, and really try and help push this. But, I mean, there's some different, uh, not not push the contract, but, uh, resolution of going to a larger container. But there's a lot of data that still needs to be gathered. But this is something we can come back to in March, you said, I think it is.
Well, uh, uh, we we come back to the rates every spring by contract. But it would be my sense that if the, um, structural analysis that the board president has indicated to us that they are asking for, comes back and, you know, you know, next week and says, gee, this is not going to work, that then we don't have to wait until next spring to to sit down and say, okay, well, what other approaches do we want to take to this? Yeah, I mean, I I just think the first step is to really find out whether or not the solution that that we approached Altamar about six or so so months ago can work. And if it can, then what would it take to make that happen? And if it can't, then, like I said, that's kind of a game changer, and then we can go back and reevaluate it. And and certainly, there's language in the contract that allows us to go back and reevaluate things of if, you know, with upon new information, and I think scavengers has always been willing to do that. So, from my perspective, anyway, I don't think we have to wait till next spring. But certainly, that is the the trigger point in terms of the annual review.
Sure, sure, I mean, there are options there, that, you know. Cause I I we're not gonna, I don't think, get that point to where you're saying it's fair and equitable. I mean, the subcommittee has looked at it, and, you know, I mean, we have gone through it, and it's, you know, we spent more time on the Altamar issue than we did, I think, anything else in this, so, I mean, much more time.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
So, it's, you know, it's not an easy one to cut, and, you know, and at the same time, I understand how folks are feeling, too.
Clark, I have a question for you and Ray. Yeah, and and Terry, you brought this up, and I was kind of mentioning it, I forgot, so I'm glad that you you did. And and in regards to the additional pickup. So, because it's all shared, it makes it difficult to do the the additional pickup for somebody. Did you guys ever talk about perhaps having a building extra pickup day as 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 an option? So, you know, I have the the green waste pickup, you know, once a year. You know, maybe, you know, the building has an an additional pickup, you know, once in the spring and once in the fall, you know, something like that. Trying to find a way to, you know, make things a little bit more equitable.
No, I don't I don't think we really broached that part of it.
Paul, is that, you know, something that maybe, um, might be able to do? Okay, all right, fair enough.
Per- perhaps, and this is just an idea. The people at at Altamar said that, you know, when they have someone who leaves a couch, puts a couch out, which would normally, for you or me, would be your extra pickup for that, you know, twice a year that you get to put your couch or your extra toilet out, whatever it may be. Maybe if that fee wasn't, could be negotiated so that they, when they had those issues, that was, you know, you wouldn't expect they're they're going to get four hundred and twenty-eight extra pickups, you know, which would be one per household if we were looking at the household rate. But if something that way could at least be worked out so that it wasn't always being charged them as an extra fee, if they were, you know, if the scavengers were notified that that couch or barcalounger had been placed there, perhaps we could work with that.
Cause the whole association pays for it when that happens.
Charlene Larson of Altamar, one of the things, one of the issues that we have, it's not just our residents placing items, you know, larger, like a toilet, or, you know, they they got rid of the babies, or the baby's older now, so you know, got rid of the changing table.
Throw out the baby.
I mean, we have a whole changing table set near Maria's house. But we literally, one of the residents the other day, saw a white truck back up, dump the dump it and go. I literally, the refrigerator and TV, I came out, it was in my parking space, and I live in the garage, or I live, you know, park in the garage. So, it's not just a residential thing, we're the local dump. So, we're also very conscientious about that.
Yeah, but that's a criminal.
It is, it's criminal, and and so we're, you know, so it's not just the rates, there's all these little little issues that we have regarding trash. And it's, you know, it just, it it's one on top of the other, and unfortunately, you know, structural, now all the other thing. But I did have a comment about billing. Residents in Brisbane, it's once every three months, isn't it?
Two months.
Okay, we're billed monthly. So fairness, you know, I just want, if you do the math there, it's a little bit.
And and you're not the only dumping place, all of Brisbane residential going out. People think that we're the place. And I'm so glad to see the dumpsters gone by the beginning of town and not to have seen the huge piles of stuff just dumped there anyway, even though there's no dumpsters. So, I hope that's been successful, but I'm just looking for a way to try to put ideas out there that might make it more equitable.
Okay, I I I think to address, you know, some of the things that you brought up, I don't think, uh, I think scavengers would have to take a look at it, and I don't think it'd be fair for us to just jam it into contract.
No, no, I am.
So, uh, you know, I think, uh, that's something, of course, we can bring up. So, it's it's, looks like it really is kind of a living contract that allows us to to make adjustments along the way as with, uh, so it's not set in stone, so to speak.
Yeah, scavengers has actually been very good about that over the years.
Yes.
Things are always coming up, and technology is changing, and this and that, and they've always been very flexible, working with the city and working with the community.
All right, so if we're ready, Mr. Mayor, I'll I'll make a motion.
Okay.
So, um, I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a new franchise agreement between the city of Brisbane and the South the South San Francisco, South San Francisco Scavenger Company for the collection and disposal of recyclable materials, organic materials, and solid waste in the city of Brisbane Solid Waste Collection Zones One and Two, uh, as well as authorizing the city manager, uh, effective December first, two thousand fourteen, and then also authorize the city manager to sign an amendment to the old, uh, franchise agreement, extending the term to November thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and second. Any further counsel discussion?
Yeah.
Ray?
All right. I think we ought to, uh, you know, make a commitment to to really, you know, focus in on these issues that have been raised and, you know, try to deal with them in an expeditious manner. And I think that ought to be a, you know, consensus of the council, that that's what we intend to do. Just make it clear that that is our purpose.
Okay. Any other? Motion and second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Pose.
I'm, I'll I'll go ahead with, thank you, Ray, for that addition to it, and I will say that I will approve.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, uh, bringing this new business, it's item A, consider, uh, mayor to execute a franchise agreement with Recology, Recology Brisbane for the collection and disposable recyclable materials, organic materials, and solid waste in the city of Brisbane Zone Three.
As noted in my earlier report, um, we passed a earlier ordinance and resolution to establish the solid, the multiple solid waste collection zones, and direction was given to staff to, um, proceed with negotiating with Zone Three with Recology. Recology offices, just as a point of information, are located in the northern portion of the solid waste collection Zone Three currently. In within that zone, there are approximately seven active businesses, including the city of Brisbane Corporation Yard and the Brisbane Baylands that fall within that zone's jurisdiction. Staff has met representatives from Recology Brisbane over the past few months to negotiate a new agreement for solid waste collection within solid waste collection Zone Three. Under this new agreement, Recology will provide solid waste and recycling collection services, banded waste cleanup service, and litter cleanup on specified streets within solid waste collection Zone Three. Similar similar to services at South San Francisco Scavenger will be providing under their agreement for Zones One and Two. The rate schedule included in Recology's agreement is for commercial businesses, as those are the only identified customers within the zone currently. I do want to note that there were some rates that were not included that I, um, left for you, which include the compacter rates and also the debris box rates. I apologize for the omission on that. The franchise fee in the proposed agreement is fourteen percent, which is the same as the South San Francisco Scavengers franchise fee. Modifications to the maximum rate schedules, as we noted earlier, are based on a refuse rate index, which is comprised of three weighted categories, fixed labor, variable pro- processing costs, and biodiesel fuel. While Recology's Bris- while Recology's RRI-based modification method is different from Scavengers' modification methods, the resulting increases are very similar when they when they are calculated out. The term for this agreement is ten years, with an option to extend up to two successive five-year terms by mutual agreement of the parties. At this time, staff is recommending authorizing the mayor to approve the new franchise agreement with Recology for Solid Waste Collection Zone Three, effective December first, two thousand and fourteen. The fiscal impact at this time is unknown, as, um, this is, this will be a new service and new fees that we will be collecting from those existing businesses, and we anticipate that the collection fees, um, collection from the franchisees will supplement future revenue for the city. At this time, I'd be ready to answer any questions.
Okay, counsel question? Lori, you want to start?
Sure, so, um, I noticed that there was, in in the agreement, that there was only a rate for for garbage, but nothing, nothing for food waste. And I had asked staff about that, but you just said that debris and, uh, food waste is now in the rates. And I I was wondering if that's true, because, well, what the staff said was that the subcommittee had considered it and requested deleting, or maybe this is a question for the subscommittee, that we delete any reference to food waste, given that there's, um, no residential use under the general plan designation. But it seems to me that, you know, even though they're commercial businesses, they still generate food waste from the employees who may eat there. And it make, seems like it would make sense to me to have food waste and organics be be in there, since the food composting is something that's provided under their service.
I think that there's a misunderstanding there.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
I I think, uh, the request, the original, uh, franchise agreement was basically exactly the same. And we said, well, but, uh, they're real, this is all, you know, it's a part of the Baylands, uh, and there's no residences there. And at least currently in the general plan, no residences are allowed. So why are we including something dealing with collection of waste and recycle and so forth from residences? So, the request was to delete the part that referred to residences.
Okay.
We never said a thing about organic waste. How that got in there, I don't know. It may be just be that the way it was set up, that the organic waste was under the residential section.
Yeah.
Uh, and but we hadn't really intended to remove that section, only the reference to residential collection.
And I think, Lori, when I, my ex- cause that was my explanation, so I, um, I think I was trying to just give the explanation of of the the whole issue with the residential, and I think that the organic waste kind of got caught up in that that conversation.
Sure, so is there new, and is there, I mean, is there a place in the contract where it talks about the different, you know, the the organics? Because I I didn't see that at all about any services being provided for that.
I I guess in some extent, it could be a question to Recology whether or not you even provide that service for those businesses. I know there's no restaurants there, no, it would just be the.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, my name's Mark Garson, I'm the area manager, group manager for Recology San Francisco. I was just told that, uh, it is in the rate exhibit. It's also, uh, there are no commercial customers, uh, that would qualify under even the new regs for that kind of volume of organic material, but we're certainly happy to include it, and I believe it is, cause it's, I'm told it's part of the rate structure, so.
It's in there for the commercial.
And what, oh, if you could stay up there for a moment, so, you know, I understand South San Francisco Scavengers has this new anaerobic digester. Can you talk about what what the service is, what's done with the food waste?
Yeah, it it goes to, uh, actually our composting operation currently, but we're also, much of our industry is actually moving towards the anaerobic digestion, so that's also in our future plans, but it's presently composted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So, it is in the rates, um, can?
Just to clarify, it is, and under services in section five point two, it does refer to recyclable and organic material, so it is covered.
Okay, and how how often will that pickup be? And and will it be in a separate container? I just didn't see the same level of detail in this contract as the other one.
I think because we we are concentrate, we did remove a lot of the residential references to it. To my understanding, a lot of the commercial is done on, either on on-call basis as opposed to a regular weekly service, so, you know, that might be how how it's handled. I will have to defer to Recology to.
Well, there's a, there's a section, the five point two talks about the Recology shall collect all source-separated recyclable materials and source-separated organic materials at the commercial properties upon a schedule established between Recology and the customer.
Okay, I do see that.
But not this frequently, in other words, to do it so that doesn't create a a storage and health hazard issue.
Okay, and then is there a section where it talks about the different rates for the that service? I don't know if it has been provided in the past under the existing contract. But is there, is there a place in the contract where it talks about not just the service being provided, but what types of containers and what the rates are, just, you know, sort of like it does in the scavengers?
You know, Lori, it, I don't think it even applies out there, you know, personally, uh, owning a restaurant, I don't deal with either of these two companies.
Okay.
But, um, I had like a one-yard bin that, you know, I put all the compostables in, and I pay for that monthly. I pay garbage on a bi-monthly, or every every two months, but but organic waste, I pay monthly. And that's not included in anything, I pay separately for that, like a hundred and something dollars a month, a hundred and thirty-seven, so. But I think in this case, I I don't think that they would even be collecting organic waste out there because you don't have a volume.
Right.
There's no restaurants or anything like that. I don't know.
Well, I'm just thinking about what if, I mean, I don't know if any of like the kitchens in any of the businesses are used for cooking, I mean, it wouldn't be a large scale, of course, but.
It wouldn't be, yeah.
I'm just curious.
If I can answer that. The services would be available identical to the trash collection, so it would be the same containers. They're often lined because of a lot of swell, so it's the same-sized containers, the same frequencies are available, and the, it's provided at a discount, so it's seventy-five percent of the solid waste rate for the organics. But, um, other than that, it's identical to the commercial trash.
Okay, and do you provide like, um, a small composting bin?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you look on, um, exhibit B, it says rape book, uniformed, commercial rates. It's a page that looks like this, um, and you'll see the, it says, "Commercial rates include the following," and it has four bullet marks.
Okay.
That would be like the third bullet mark, which Mark just spoke to, seventy-five percent of that rate.
Okay, I do see that, thank you. That's all I have.
Cliff?
Yeah, thanks, Clark, okay, um.
Okay, um, let's see, so on page eleven and twelve, it talks about the abandoned waste cleanup collection service. So, so going on to page twelve, so we have the weekly and the monthly pickup. So we have Beatty Avenue, Atlanta Way, where's Atlanta, or Lena? Is that the, if you're going down Beatty towards the freeway, and then you make a left turn, is it the little street before you go underneath the underpass or overpass?
Atlanta.
Okay, so that's called Atlanta Way, all right. I don't think there's a sign, a street sign, is there? On the corner, probably not. But, okay, so I'm glad we clarified that. So I know there's like a, you know, they collect on these, you know, weekly and monthly, and then I guess if you get to a certain amount, then over what they expect to, to, to pick up out there, then that, then that responsibility falls on the city, correct?
Well, it would fall onto Recology, but there may be a fee involved.
Okay, all right, you know, just looking at...
Talking about the excess, if you ever, that's my understanding, is that it would, if we go over the certain limit, then we would incur a fee.
All right, and then, you know, just looking at Beatty and Elena. You know, I, I take that exit, or that, that street to get onto the freeway. I think it's faster than going straight and, yeah, going that route. But I do see a lot of the debris that's on those streets, and it seems like it's, it's, you know, a lot of it is associated with the activity that's going on out there. So, I mean, but you don't see large things being dumped, there's more like trash stuff. So I doubt if that would, you know, add to the way, it seems like if there's going to be a lot of debris that's going to happen, you know, like what people are going to dump, it's going to be on tunnel. So, you know, it talks about Tunnel Avenue excluding the portion of the roadway between ten-twenty Tunnel Avenue and the southernmost boundary of six-oh-one Tunnel Avenue. So can you explain where that is along Tunnel?
Ten-twenty Tunnel Avenue is actually the corp yard, and then moving northern towards six-oh-one, that is actually private property, which is why that is excluded from that section.
Okay, so on the map of zone three, so can you show me where that, that ends? What's that? Sierra Point Lumber. Okay, so everything along Tunnel Avenue from the corp yard all the way up to Sierra Point Lumber, they're not going to pick up? Or they are going to pick up?
They are going to.
It's owned by Universal Paragon, right?
They are not going to pick that up, sir.
They're not going to pick up.
That is still the responsibility of UPC and Sunquest to pick up, because it's a private road that the public has a license to travel on.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're clear there. So, okay, so then we're going to go back to, well, I guess we've always had the agreement with Universal Paragon about picking up the trash that's along there. But can you provide some clarity about, you know, the responsibility of that, Randy or Clay?
When we see debris out there, we tell them to go out and pick it up, yes, sir. And they've, they've been on a weekly schedule, and as many of you are probably aware, they've started to try and put up some barriers to prevent the, the major dumping, which is really more of the problem there, it's not so much the wind-blown debris that we get there, but it's the midnight dump schedule, where people go out under cover of darkness and pull off the side of the road and just empty what's in their trucks.
Okay, so then they're going to be responsible for Tunnel Avenue north of Sierra Point Lumber, or Golden State Lumber?
Well, the easiest way to think of it, sir, is where the road is a public road, where it's been improved, and where Recology is going to have responsibilities, as you're traveling north on Tunnel, you suddenly get to a section of the road where there is a curb and gutter, from that point north.
From that point north, okay, all right. And then, and then also Lagoon Way, so Lagoon Way is, even though it's, that is a public street?
Lagoon Way is a public street, and that's why it's on the schedule.
I'm sorry, my mic was off. Lagoon Way is a public street, and that's why it is on their schedule for monthly manual cleanup along the public portion of that right-of-way.
Okay, all right. So, let's see. Now that you've provided that clarification about Tunnel Avenue, let's see. So, and on page thirteen in that upper paragraph, so it says, "Recology shall charge city for all such excess services at the corresponding rates set forth on exhibit B as then in effect." So, and it says, "Provided however, that Recology and the city may agree to have Recology recover fees for such excess services through the next annual rate adjustment." And I don't know if this is for staff or for you guys, you know, were you thinking that, you know, we have been dealing with a lot of debris out there, but it seems like a lot of the dumping that's going on is happening on UPC's property, not so much public property. So, I don't know, what do you think, Randy? I mean, is that, is that an accurate statement, or?
Dumping happens everywhere, sir.
Yeah.
We are easily having fifty call-outs right now with the existing franchisee. So we get, we call them out at least once a week for dumping everywhere.
So, so dumpers don't know the dividing line between city property and private property?
It's an ongoing problem everywhere, and we're fortunate that our problem is nowhere near as bad as the city and county of San Francisco's.
Sure.
Where they have entire blocks that are just filled up, they look like a solid waste landfill. Although I think we've had a slight improvement with Candlestick being closed.
Hmm, okay.
Yes.
All right.
Especially on Mondays.
From August through January?
So, yeah, so I guess this question is really for, for the two of you guys. You know, you, did you discuss the, you know, the, you know, the responsibility of the additional costs? I mean, trying to avoid having the city pay the excess in accumulated debris that's picked up from what is the negotiated amount?
There wasn't a whole lot of discussion around that, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, Randy can jump in here if he wants, but I think, you know, the, the, the number of pickups that Randy put into the, this agreement here, I think he feels is sufficient to get the job done.
All right.
And if, if it proves not to be, then I think we're going to have to revisit, revisit that issue. This is, as we all know, is a very problematic area for dumping and for debris. But I think there's certainly an expectation that, you know, Recology is going to take care of Beatty, because I think most of, I think they would agree, most of that comes from their, from their operation. But the rest of it, you know, is, is something that is in the city, and, you know, we do have the UPC issue, and, you know, it's, it's a challenge. I mean, I, you know, I'd like to authorize Lisa to be able to go out there and shoot tires out of violators. Well, I didn't, I won't say that in front of the city attorney, but, I mean, it's very frustrating for everybody. And I know, talking with Recology folks, I mean, they, the level of frustration that we have is nothing compared to what they deal with in San Francisco.
Sure, all right, you know, and I'm glad that, you know, that you, that you feel that what Randy has, has calculated is that, that base amount should, should be appropriate to, to not have us be in that position where we would have to pay additional funds, you know, or pay money from, from the city to, to cover the cost of additional pickup, so. Okay. Let's see, was that it? I think it was, so, on page fifteen. Okay, so in that, that first full paragraph, so it talks about, say, Brisbane H L have the option of purchasing CNG for city-owned vehicles that use CNG at the Sunset Scavenger facility located at five-oh-one Tunnel Avenue. So, so it's, so they have a facility, Sunset Scavengers, they do?
They have a facility, we just don't have any vehicles at the moment.
Okay.
Just future planning, in the event that we do start replacing the fleet and we go to a more environmentally friendly combustion-type engine, we'll be able to use the CNG.
Okay, all right, yeah, I didn't know that they had a facility there, so that was interesting information. Okay. That is it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Carrie?
So is the CNG anticipated to be, or the possibility of it, from their digester? Or is that just a tank they've got that's a storage tank for CNG?
I'll have to ask them to answer, ma'am, I don't know the exact nature of their operation.
It's not that important, but... Your current facility is just...
Our facility is tank and, and gas line. Hopefully in the future, it'll be digestion.
Running off your trucks.
And it's presently fast fuel, anticipated to be slow fuel, so with a fast fuel option.
Exhibit?
The, exhibit C, the city facilities in zone three, receiving free services. The corp yard, but that's to make sure that they, the containers are not to be public containers, just for use for the city staff, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's inside the corp yard?
So we don't get a repeat of what we've seen previously. Thank you, that's it for me.
Oh, I already asked my question, but I did have a follow-up question about the corp yard. So, you know, there was that dumpster that was out there, and I'm wondering what, if staff could tell us, you know, since the dumpster's been removed, what have we seen in terms of abandoned litter on the streets? Has it increased, or, and who was paying for the removal of trash from the dumpster?
Well, the dumpster was something that basically South San Francisco Scavengers offered to, to put out there when we were trying to come up with solutions, and over time, you know, it just became more and more and more. And, you know, they approached us and said, you know, there's, there's probably, there's a limit here to how... And we were, you know, we all recognized that.
They could reach it a year ago.
It was, it was never intended to be a permanent solution. In terms of what's happening out there now, I, you know, my sense is that we're not seeing huge amounts of dumping, but, you know, who knows? This weekend could be a bad weekend, I mean, you just never know with this stuff. But I haven't, you know, we have, we have specifically made efforts, Randy and his staff and Lisa, to, to, you know, make sure that we don't get illegal dumping where the, where the bins were, because we were concerned that people would just come anyway and start dumping. But, you know, we precluded that from happening. The stuff along the roadway, I mean, it's just, you know, I don't, I don't know if empirically I can say whether it's, it's less, or, you know, but it doesn't appear to me that we've seen a huge uptick on that. I don't know, Randy, you may have a different perspective, I don't know.
Well, I don't think it's been a one-for-one substitution. I don't think the people who are coming down and using the dumpsters are just automatically taking it somewhere else. I mean, there is always a slight uptick when we've done that, because we had actually taken the dumpsters and moved them a couple of times during the intervening period when they were out there. And during those time periods, just like when we first took them out of service, we do see an uptick along Sierra Point Parkway. It's, it's the disappointed dumpers as they're taking off. They, they always intended to drop it somewhere without paying for it, and they carry through on those intends. But really where we're seeing more dumping, the bigger problems we're having along Guadalupe Canyon Parkway, particularly on the south side of the roadway, that big turnout roadway, and it looks like about the only way we're going to do that is we're going to have to somehow create a physical barrier for people pulling in there, because they pull in undercover of darkness, and they make a quick deposit, and off they go.
And who is that area covered by? Is that by the scavengers? Is that within the city limits along Guadalupe?
Yes, it is, ma'am, yes, that's, one or two, one of those two, it's not three.
That's it.
Any other questions? Counsel's pleasure on this.
Well, I think we should move ahead. I think we've answered all the questions, and we're welcoming Recology officially for this particular service. So, I think it has a number of purposes, which we've talked about in the past, and it all is consistent with the city policy. I think it's a good move, and so I would be prepared to authorize the mayor to execute a franchise agreement with Recology for the collection and disposal of recyclable materials, organic materials, and solid waste in zone three.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Any further counsel discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The whole Scavenger crew, both companies. Okay, next item is item B, which is consider approving a letter of support for the community bulk solar purchasing program. Peninsula Sunshares, South Florida, Carolina.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. It is my pleasure to speak with you tonight about an innovative program that the city of Brisbane has the opportunity to take part in. It is being called Peninsula Sunshares, and it is basically a residential solar bulk purchase program that the city of Foster City is taking the lead on. It has been a few months that they've been starting their research on how they can have a bulk solar procurement program for their residents. And in speaking with a nonprofit organization called the Vote Solar Initiative, or Vote Solar, which is a grassroots organization sponsored by the TIDES Center, it was determined that to get the, I'll use that term that we've been hearing a lot tonight, economies of scale, to make better sense, they needed to expand their reach. And it was going to be where they would need to open the program up to other cities in the county. It has gained popularity with also cities outside of the county. The city of Palo Alto has officially signed on and submitted a letter of commitment to the city of Foster City for the ability to be a participant, participant in the program. So essentially, what will happen is that if we were to submit a letter of commitment to the city of Foster City, we would be able to have the same rates, or, yeah, solar pricing available to our residents as well as those that work in town, as long as they live in the nine-county Bay Area, to have access to heavily discounted solar rates to install a system on their rooftops. So this is for homeowners, and the Vote Solar has been selected as the administrator for the program, as they have the expertise to market the program, which is heavily, I guess they've seen that in their research, solar is the fastest, the fastest-growing energy solution in the world. However, with the, the scale is where to bring the technology to scale, we need to bring down the costs and the soft costs that have to do with the marketing. And so, this program was, the contract was adopted by the city of Foster City's council in August. The facility subcommittee met last week and gave staff direction to proceed and to edit some portions of the letter of commitment. And so that is attachment one. And, and also, this is a fairly short window for participants to sign on to the program. They want that time to be during the months of January through, I'm sorry, January through March is when Vote Solar will issue the request for proposals to the solar companies. And there's going to be a selection committee to evaluate the different proposals with a participant from each of the agencies that are signed on as participants to sit on. So the city of Brisbane, if we were to submit a letter, would have a seat open for either an active community member or a staff person, or someone just interested in going solar. to sit on that evaluation committee. And in the proposals, of course, will be different financing options of how to install the systems. There is the ownership or direct purchase of solar panels, there would be a solar lease, which is a fixed monthly cost, independent of how much energy the system produces, and it's usually a 20-year term. And a new financing option is solar power purchase agreements. And I've clarified with the, with Vote Solar, that this has been a more popular option to go, it's very attractive for consumers because there are investment tax credits that are passed on to the consumer. And with solar PPAs, you are not the owner of the system, however, you are getting your, you either pay monthly, or you can do a prepaid PPA over the, over a 20-year term, so you can either do upfront or prepaid, and it's based on how much energy savings your system actually produces. And versus a lease, where you're paying a fixed monthly cost, independent of how your system does. And another reason why solar PPAs are more attractive is that it prevents a larger system than necessary being installed on your rooftop. Let's see, so, the time period for registration to open for this program would be April through June, and this would be only a three-month period where installations would begin immediately and program evaluation next fall. So what we're being asked of in the letter of commitment is to pass on the marketing materials that Vote Solar will be creating to those residents, or basically households, and also relationships that we have with the business community. And basically, the measure of success is to see that the soft costs to install residential solar are reduced, allowing Brisbane homeowners to install solar on their rooftops at a heavily discounted price. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Counsel questions? Ray?
I just wanted to point out or reiterate something for the rest of the council, and that is that basically all we're being asked to do is to make a commitment that we will provide information to a certain number of businesses and households, and that basically we're offering a marketing function, and that's all. We're not making any kind of commitment about, you know, how many people are gonna sign up or anything, we're only agreeing to make the information available through all the methods that we have, period.
All right, and then in return, we get economy of scale from all the other cities that are part of it? So everyone gets the same rate?
Right.
That's correct.
Okay, sounds like a good, good option to me.
So is that a motion and a second? Go ahead, lawyer.
I think it's great, I mean, we've heard about this program before, and I'm pleased to see that this will hopefully be available to residents, because, you know, it's still expensive to put solar on your roof, but, you know, the more we can do to make it more affordable for our residents, the better. But you had mentioned that this was for purchasing, so does that mean if someone wants to lease panels rather than purchase them outright, which may be more affordable to lease them in today's market, is that something that wouldn't be allowed under this program?
No, there's actually a various, there will be various options depending on what the solar companies have in their proposals.
Okay.
And so there would be essentially three options that they've seen most in what solar companies are offering these days, there is the direct purchase, there's a lease, and then there's PPAs.
What's the difference between the, can you explain what the PPA is?
She just explained it before.
Okay, as opposed to the lease, I'm sorry.
The lease is a fixed amount monthly that is paid, independent of how the unit actually performs.
Okay.
The PPA is, they will model over a 20-year period how they expect the system to perform, and you either pay monthly or prepaid, and it's a 20-year term also. So you're banking on the kilowatt-hour rate that you agree when you sign the contract for your PPA agreement to be less than what the utility company would be increasing over that time period.
Okay. And is the PPA for a lease or for a purchase?
It's, it works much like a-
It's neither one, it's different.
Okay.
You know, the lease is, you pay so-and-so much per month, the purchase, you know, you buy it, but the PPA is a more complicated contract you sign, and how much you pay varies on how much saving you actually get over time.
Interesting.
Right? Yeah, so the payment is variable rather than fixed, lease versus PPA.
Kind of like a mortgage, okay, yeah, variable rate.
Right. Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, and are they also going to include options where you can, you said you could prepay for both leasing and purchasing, because I know, like, that's what we did personally, we got a lease, but we prepaid it, so it was cheaper.
Right.
So, do you know if that'll be-
Maybe.
Yeah, it depends.
Okay, more in the details.
Yeah.
Okay, and you said it was open to residents and employ, is it open to employees?
Employees, yeah.
Who live outside of Brisbane?
Yes.
Okay. And is that a reason for the outreach to businesses? Because it wasn't clear to me why there would be outreach to businesses if it's a residential program. Is it to reach the residents who may, I mean, the employees who may be interested in it? Okay, well, that's all the questions I had.
Any other questions?
Oh, one other question, and do we know of any other cities that have done this sort of program? Because it seems, you know, it's interesting that this was city-initiated rather than county or CCAG, or, you know, are you aware of any other cities that have gone through this process, like Foster City?
No, not specifically.
Okay.
That's why it's fairly innovative, it seems to be able to have that open to the region.
You had a number of cities that have signed on already, though.
Right, Palo Alto has submitted their letter of commitment, and they have received, I guess, verbal commitments from the cities of Half Moon Bay, Burlingame, Millbury, Belmont, and I think I had another one listed in the staff report.
All the B cities.
So we should join.
The B ones instead of the A ones.
Okay, great.
So, I'd move approval.
Second.
Second, any further, Terry, do you want to ask something?
No.
Okay, motion?
Hope it works.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Bring this to staff report, city managers' report on upcoming activities.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one that may take a couple minutes, would you prefer to go to the next item with Mr. Maynard?
You know what, yeah, because I'm sorry, Bob, you had to wait through all this, I'm sure you found it interesting, right? But-
Oh, he's a council junkie, he doesn't-
Let's divert to that, which is reapportment of Robert Maynard as city's representative of Samatail County Mosquito and Vector Control District, and I'm sure everybody's read Bob's letter, and he has this, uh, scintillating annual report, so-
Move approval.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a second and a third, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you for your service. I think we're really lucky to have Bob as our representative.
I agree.
I'm sure he's the most conscientious of everybody involved, he's gotta be.
And you give really great detailed reports, so, thank you.
Thank you, Bob, for your long service, I know you didn't want to do it, but we sure appreciate it.
Yeah.
And it sounds like your experience on it will help, especially since there's a lot of new people, so it'll be good to have.
Many, not four.
Wow.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so, two kind of scheduling items, as you know, I sent you out, sent out to you a email earlier this week with regards to the status of the seven thousand-